I'd like to call this February 10, 2022, Regular Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Anagnostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Thocek?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, we remind ourselves of our district goals. Our district goals remain academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement, and we measure all of our decisions by those three goals. Dr. Raiba, I'm going to suggest we switch the order as an audible, and I turn it over to recognition for you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We do have a couple of recognitions on the agenda tonight, so at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Dave Axner, Executive Director of BASA, to come to the podium for his recognition presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Board members, I really appreciate having a few minutes here to recognize your superintendent, who is very deserving, and probably wishes I didn't come here and do this, but we're going to do it anyway, so you're just going to have to sit there and listen. My name's Dave Axner. As Cameron said, I am the Executive Director at the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, known as BASSA, and have just didn't start there, was a longtime teacher and administrator, principal up this way, and 17 years at Chagrin Falls, and then went down, took the Dublin City job for about seven years, retired and started association work. So I know very well what you do as board members, and I commend you. I always just would shake my head over the years of being a school superintendent and understanding our job's hard, but without the support of a school board, and you just seem to, let's say, have it together here and do some really good work. So back when I was at Chagrin, Strongsville was always a district that was looked up to, and it continues to be so. Congratulations for that, and again, thanks for your time that you spend for the students here in the district. So what is BASSA, and what do we do? We're basically the professional organization for school superintendents, and we have right around 900 members, probably like 98% of all school superintendents are members. What we do is represent our supes, but also connect them with Ohio Department of Education, as far as communication, the General Assembly, Governor's Office, they don't always listen to us, but we do talk with them. Professional support, PD is going on every week, and I can tell you that Cameron's very involved, has been one of the leaders in regards to some of the things I'll talk about here. And then we have 15 standing committees, and many of them, the Ohio High School Athletic Association, a finance committee, an ODE meeting, and so forth, that keeps us in tune and up to date along with our superintendents. So if you'd come down to our offices, you would see a conference room almost every day or every other day of about 30 or 40 superintendents working with a representative of one of those organizations, which is what we do. So each year, we recognize one superintendent in each of the 10 regions in the state of Ohio. Our goal really is to provide some external validation for what you already know. I'm guessing all of you know you have a really strong superintendent, and I think sometimes we look at our superintendent, and our treasurer, and our school administrators, that team, you know, locally versus how do they rate across the state. And what I can tell you is what you've built here is a very strong team, and you've got some really strong leaders, and again, other people recognize it, that's what brings me up here from Columbus tonight. So the award itself, let me just talk about the criteria and give you an idea of how does this happen. And so the region winner is selected by their peers, and they must have the following: community involvement, be very active professionally, must be a leader of character, an innovator, and sets an example for peers. And it's not like superintendent can fill out an application, and here's all the things that I do, and I fit that criteria. Cameron's a perfect example of someone who just does it, and people see it, and people recognize it, people appreciate it, and honor it in regards to how he does it. He's very thoughtful, maybe one of the most thoughtful superintendents that I know, and again, I said, we have a lot of members, but as you know, I'm sure with your business here, he thinks through things versus just making a decision that's going to affect students and staff and this entire educational community without talking it out and getting a good feel. So Cameron Raiba is the exemplary leadership award winner tonight, and that's why I'm here, for this region. He represents your district in an extreme positive way. He does spend time when he can down in Columbus, and he's been involved in committees, and I'll give you one example of just the incredible work that he's done, and you may know some of it, I don't know all of it. But about four years ago, we had a state report card that was very unfair to our students and our teachers. People were working their tails off, students were working their tails off, it wasn't recognized, and the data that was produced and the ratings that went on, although still above average in most districts similar to Strongsville, it really didn't tell the story. And Cameron, along with one of the leaders with approximately 30 superintendents that worked for three and a half years, and he drove many times down to Columbus and back to be here at School Inn, to work with our legislators and other associations to try to get a change. And I got to be honest with you, because I've been in this so long, I sat in many of those meetings, and I really thought in my heart, you know, our superintendents are working so hard, it's not going to happen, legislators won't. And all of a sudden, you saw it turn, and you saw the discussion start, and the legislators start to get it, and finally, this year, we had an opportunity to see changes in the local report cards that made a huge impact on districts that didn't cheat districts out of what they had worked hard to do and earn. I was down at the Capitol when Cameron, we were actually side by side when we spoke, and you would have been so proud how he represented the state of Ohio and this district on the work they did and talked about some of the changes. They're going to relieve some of the worries and the angst that we had as educators, and it was something I know that we're all appreciated and proud with, he and a few other leaders that just took the reins and got it done. His attitude is incredible, he's a nice guy, you've got an outstanding leader in this district, and we couldn't be more proud to have him as one of our region, you know, award winners in the exemplary award. So Cameron, if you'd come up, I'd like to hand you the award here, quickly get this on your wall.
Well, thank you, Dave, for making the trip up from Columbus, and I'd like to thank all the people that came here for my special recognition tonight. But once again, as Dave said, it's, I'm very humbled for the recognition, and just grateful for the opportunities that I've been given throughout BASSA, throughout the region, to represent our school district and to represent my colleagues. So thank you for making the trip and your wonderful words, it's greatly appreciated. At this time, I'd like to ask Jake Alt-
Not so fast.
Okay.
So on behalf of the board, we are very proud of Cameron's accomplishments, and I just want to piggyback off of Dave's comments. He said, you know, a lot of times when we have conversations in Columbus, they don't seem to listen, but Cameron showed as an example, if you're patient, and you continue with a good message, eventually they'll listen, and eventually good changes are made. And I think that highlights Cameron's approach, and the entire board is appreciative of that approach, that we're not worried about so much flash and pomp and circumstance, we're worried about doing good work, we're worried about doing it day in and day out, and Cameron's leadership shows how that works, and we're all very proud of his efforts and his work. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Do we have any other recognition, Dr. Raiba?
We do, thank you. Transitioning to my colleague over there, I'd like to ask Mr. Jake Altman, liaison for the Ohio State Auditor, our Ohio Auditor of State, to come up for his recognition. Jake?
Thank you. Happy to be here tonight on behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber to present the Strongsville City School District with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. It's important to note that there's about 6,000 entities that we audit across the state, and about 4% of them receive this award, so it really kind of puts you into the top, top tier of school districts across the state and other entities as well. And it speaks to everybody here in the district pulling together for fiscal integrity. That's the board, that's the administration, that's parent volunteers, everybody who's touching money and who's helping pull this along, and it especially speaks to the professionalism and the leadership of Mr. Anagnostu and his team. So on behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber, congratulations.
So first, I would like to thank, miss, hang on, guys. So first, I'd like to thank Keith Faber's office, the Ohio Auditor of State, Jake Altman, for presenting this prestigious award to us. This is the third year in a row that the district has received this recognition with distinction, so it's something that we're all proud of. And as Mr. Miko said at the last board meeting, this is for the fiscal year 2021 audit, which was last school year, and it's equivalent to an A+. So we've got an A+ on our finances, as Mr. Altman said, our financial integrity, and again, it's a team effort, it can't be done alone. So I have members of my team here, Don Evangelista, Nick Mancini, Luthan Pranzek, and other members of the team that couldn't be here, Joan Kahud, Judy Durcago, Nikki Konachensky, and then in addition, it's a total team effort district-wide. So I'd like to thank Dr. Raiba, Mrs. Pelco, Russell Cole, Mr. Trillo, Mrs. Green, Mr. Brechner, Mr. Bankley, Mr. Faust, for all their continued support. We had a lot of changes over the last couple of years, making process improvements, and everyone was supportive of that and got on board, so it allows us to be in a good spot financially and keep moving the district forward. So thanks again, and try and keep it up.
There is no try. And I just want to take a moment on behalf of the board to compliment George. Oftentimes, we say it's a well-deserved award, whether it's Dr. Raiba's award or Mr. Anagnostu's award. In this case, it's well-earned, and it's earned, once again, by daily work, not just by George, but by his entire team. So we extend our congratulations and our thanks, most importantly, because the reason Strongsville is the good district that it is, is because of the work we do every day. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we are going to return to the regular order, and we do have public comment. I will note that I was thinking that our goals are academic achievement and growth, and we've had an example of that with Dr. Raiba, financial prudence, we've had an example of that with Mr. Anagnostu, and community engagement, and so we're going to have an example of that with public comment. And our first public comment is Bev Jones. Bev, you've done this before, you have approximately three minutes, name and address at the podium.
Good evening. I am Beverly Jones, 15134 Camden Circle, Strongsville, and, let's see, did I say everything I was supposed to say? Oh, okay. All right. I am here because I want to help. I love this district, we've seen examples of how excellent our district is. My kids went through K through 12, and they did a great job, they were prepared. So I mentioned before that we've had discussions about how to keep the excellence in our district, and I'm only going to talk about one category, and I was assured by our president and our superintendent that critical race theory was not being taught, and I wanted, you know, so badly to believe you, but I'm not sure either people weren't being straight with me, or people were not aware that it actually is trying to seep into our district, and I have some examples of that. I received the Diversity Council update, and I'm only going to read one sentence. It's pretty lengthy, but I did read, I'll read this. "As mentioned in previous updates, in January, we started the strategic planning process for our diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts to ensure all students feel valued, accepted, and heard in our district, that they feel that they belong." Okay? And so I just want to say to you that I want to help let students, and I like the word, feel that they belong, because that's the goal. I have, you have, I'm sure that we agree that our students should feel that they're being heard and that they belong. I know that critical race theory being taught is not the way to accomplish this. Okay, so tip one, and I'll be back with some more. We can all agree that we want our students to feel that they belong. So don't separate them, because separation is the same word as segregation. Now, I could be up here for hours talking about how bad that turned out. Separation is the same as segregation. And so I just want you to know that in 1975, I was one of six seniors, black seniors, in my class. Okay? That's really small. You'd think I would have had problems, which I did, but I was in Buckeye School District, you guys, right down the street and around the corner. Okay? But I ended up being homecoming queen. And a friend of mine who was on the court has been now married to her wife for 20 years. Okay? So how did that happen? Well, that happened because, not that we were separated because of our differences, like they're trying to do now, it was because we belonged. We were people accepted in our student body, and the adults did not interfere with how we got to learn each other, learn about each other, and learn from each other. We learned other religions, other cultures, socioeconomic statuses, orientations, all the differences that could have torn us apart had we been separated. Please don't do that to our students. It worked way back when the riots were going on, and it will work now. And so I just want to say, the bottom line is, let's use, now there's going to be bullying, there always will be. That's why we have a handbook, it's the school district's bible, I call it. So if anything needs to be changed, maybe we need to, because there's cyberbullying and that sort of thing, we need to look into that, but don't separate the students, please don't let that happen. The bottom line, tip one, don't separate our students, because separation is segregation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. Next is Jess Coza.
My name is Jessica Coza, and I reside at 9812 Hazelwood Avenue, Strongsville. I wanted to come here tonight and speak on a much-needed praise. Last night, I had probably one of the best parent-teacher conferences to date for my son, Jack. A few weeks ago, a specials teacher reached out to me in regards to some hardships my son was having in the classroom. It wasn't common to hear this particularly with his specials, so I had made some suggestions, like connecting with the intervention specialists for some strategies. We had other concerns, so we all met, and the collaboration was wonderful. My husband and I felt heard, everything was on the table. We talked about connection, which I know a lot of autistic students sometimes have a hard time getting with, especially when they need to advocate for their own needs. In his time at SARAR, my son has worked very hard to gain social skills, in particular with adults. My son has started to recognize his own deficits, and at the age of 10, it can be full of anxiety. Asking for help is a challenge, especially among autistics. With the help of his team, he's gotten much better at self-advocating for his needs. I was even more in shock with his progress when he opened up to his pediatrician about his concentration struggles and asked how we could fix that. You all should be very proud of these teachers who truly want their students to succeed, feel accepted despite their academic challenges and their differences. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jess. Next is Tom Zurko.
I'll pass, please.
Thank you, Tom. Next is Henry Joniak.
Hello, my name is Henry Joniak, 12311 Cooper's Run. We are here today because we thought that this school board would benefit from hearing the perspectives of the students who work with Mr. King on a daily basis. We are also coming in appreciation for the Strong Musical Foundation, which Strongsville City Schools has provided us. Personally, I'm a senior, a section leader, and I am coming in to represent the band officers who work the closest with Mr. King. He has encouraged and supported student leadership and autonomy, which has provided a framework for success in both music and beyond. He has repeatedly shown that he cares about our physical and mental well-being. He always gives positive encouragement, and in the long days of Band Camp and the many rehearsals of the concert season, he listens to us to ensure we feel heard, both as musicians and individuals. Excellence in the Arts is one of our district's goals. Under his leadership, our music program are in superior ratings in OMEA contests as both individual groups and student-led ensembles, and as a part of the larger ensembles. In fact, our music program was the largest group represented at the recent solo and ensemble competition, along with getting mostly all superior and excellent ratings. It is because of the way Mr. King fosters a love of music that many of us plan on continuing music at the collegiate level. Many of us have joined college marching bands, concert bands, and some have even decided to major or minor in music education and performance. It is because of the environment which Mr. King creates in the band room that students love music. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Henry. Pam Zulstra.
I live at 9775 Juniper Court. I am here to express my support for the Strongsville High School Band Program. My daughter has been in the band program since the fifth grade. It's really become her thing. My daughter has, you know, she was in skating before high school, and she had to choose whether she wanted to go into continuing with skating or stay with band. She chose band. She's made friends that she will probably be friends with for life. There's been some controversy about the band, and I'm here to express my support in how much, I think Mr. King has just been great for these kids, and he's an awesome teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next is Scott Maloney.
Hello. Dear Board of Education, Superintendent Raiba-
Before you go, any further name and address, please?
Scott Maloney, 19532 Stoughton Drive, Strongsville. Dear Board of Education, Superintendent Raiba, and the rest of the school district leadership team, I'm here to speak to you tonight on behalf of Mr. King, who was the victim of nothing less than a character assassination during public comment at your last board meeting. My wife, Vicki, and I have two sons currently in the district's music program at the high school, who have been playing instruments since the fifth grade. Our son, Andrew, who's a sophomore, loves being a percussionist and is in the marching band, jazz ensemble, wind ensemble, symphony orchestra, and pep band. So he has had extensive exposure to Mr. King's teaching and oversight of the band-related groups at the high school. Both Vicki and I also grew up heavily involved in the music programs at our schools. We've been involved with the Strongsville Instrumental Music Boosters, and I was previously a member of the school board, so I have an awareness of how the district operates that other people wouldn't have. The parent who aired her concerns at the board meeting last time you met doesn't currently have any students doesn't currently have any students enrolled in the district and has not for several years. Pretty much every example that she provided to support her concerns about the program were either taken out of context to the story, true story behind the situation or they were just out-and-out fabrications. As supporting evidence, she pointed out that the marching band shrinking was proof that Mr. King is scaring students away from wanting to participate. The reality is that there are numerous factors that have contributed to reducing marching band participation. We are only now getting past the effect of the teacher's strike years ago on the music program when we essentially lost an entire grade of students when they didn't get to choose an instrument and join the music program in fifth grade. The district tried to offer alternatives to let those kids pick up an instrument the following year, but the damage had been done. More recently, COVID played a role in causing a reduction in marching band participation because certain kids chose not to join when the fun had been taken out of being in the band. The kids didn't get to go to away games and at home games, they just marched out on the field and stood in place while playing the halftime show. And people may forget that parents were prohibited from attending many of those games that year, which also contributed to some kids just quitting because they saw no purpose in performing when their parents couldn't even see them play. In fact, enrollment in just about every extracurricular activity is down from previous levels due to COVID impacts, so it's wrong to single out marching band participation and imply that Mr. King is the root cause of a shrinking group. We've had a lot of exposure to Mr. King during the years he's been in his role and we have never seen anything other than a genuine passion for the music program and his desire to see the kids succeed at what they do with music and have fun. Have there been occasional moments of frustration over the years? How could there not be when you're dealing with hundreds of what can sometimes be obnoxious teenagers? Anyone who is a parent of a teenager knows they can sometimes test the limits of our patience. At no time have we ever heard of a situation where Mr. King did something that would intentionally embarrass a student in front of others, put down a student because of their musical abilities might be less than those of other students, or engage in anything other than the behaviors that would be an encouragement to students in the program. Mr. King will tell you there have been a couple times over the years where Vicki and I have had a concern about some aspect of the program or how something was being executed and our interactions with him were always professional and we came to a mutual agreement on the outcome. He didn't try to be evasive, he didn't drag his feet, try to ignore us. There was never any hostility or defensiveness on his part. He was always happy to interact with us to discuss the concern. In closing, I hope that people give these comments due consideration and will dismiss the totally inappropriate smear campaign that the concerned resident was waging not just at the last board meeting, but on social media and with other organizations in the community because it appears that she has a personal vendetta and has been persistently trying to run Mr. King out of our school district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, next is Mary Bowman.
My name is Mary Bowman. My address is 19916 Drake Road, Strongsville. Um, tonight I am also speaking to you in behalf of the Strongsville High School Band and the Strongsville District's Band, um, Program. I am speaking more on a personal level, um, because I have, as many of you know, I have several children that have been through this system. Um, my second oldest was a very, um, for lack of a better word, poor student. He didn't like school, he hated it, in fact. And it was a struggle to get him to do anything, to read, to, to complete homework. He wouldn't turn it in, he didn't do anything that, it was, it was a rough road until he had band. When he picked up that instrument in fifth grade, his world began to sort of brighten and he, he changed. Now, his grades didn't improve very much for a while, but his love of music was there. And when he got into middle school and he saw that there was other options for band, not just the, the, the class member, but the, the jazz band and all of the other options that he had, it was like a light bulb went off. He entered high school and he was accepted by this group of people that he, he didn't know. I mean, he had no idea. There was all of these upperclassmen that were welcoming him and this particular director was the only director that he ever knew. He had no frame of reference other than this particular gentleman. So, what happened prior to that was irrelevant to him. It didn't matter because it didn't affect him at the moment. And this band director nurtured him and, and he gave him, you know, challenges and he gave him instruction and he, he took us time with him. And this child of mine, who hated school, is now at Ohio State on a scholarship for music education. He wants to do what Mr. King does. So how horrible of a teacher could he be? If he fostered this kid, I, I mean, he was like, he was rough. Um, and I, let me tell you, it was rough. But he's thriving, he's thriving at a very large institution that is very competitive. He is in the highest performing ensemble group at Ohio State. He has won, you know, superior ratings at all of the OEA's. He's, he was in Cleveland Youth Wind Symphony at the end of sophomore year in the first part of the, the highest section there. He just, he just thrives under this tutelage that Mr. King provided for him. I just don't understand how any person who has only been in the district for seven years can be compared to someone who had 30. I think that he deserves the opportunity to build the program the way his, his previous director had. He didn't, um, run anybody out of town. Mr. Harvart retired, there was an opening. It was filled. And from what I can see, it's been filled magnificently. I can count on both hands the number of students that I know just from when he graduated in 2019 that are going into music education as their chosen career. So, he must be doing something right. And so I, I think that it's very important to stop living in the past and stop comparing apples and oranges. It's a different generation, it's a different program, and this man is entitled to the time that any other teacher or professional is allowed to build their career. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board during public comment? At our last board meeting during public comment, Mrs. Trudler brought to our attention a number of serious concerns with the band program and its director, Mr. King. Mrs. Trudler also shared additional information via email. Several emails from parents of both past and current students were sent to the board in response to the public comment. The board and administration has read and reviewed all of the information shared. We take issues of the safety of our students seriously and wish to assure the community that our students have been and are safe during band activities. One of the district's missions is to ensure that every student feels valued and belongs to our school so that they can achieve their true potential. Students with special needs are valued and welcome in all our school activities, including marching band. The number of participants in band or any other extracurricular at our high school is only one measure we evaluate as a board and district. While important, it is not the sole arbiter of success or failure. We recognize that the individual experiences of our students in band and other activities are also important. We will hold ourselves accountable and as such, will work to improve and enhance what we do as individual teachers or staff and as a school district. The board, superintendent, and high school principal are always open to comments or questions from parents or the community. Mr. Brian King is our band director at Strongsville High School. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is treasurer's report. Mr. Onnagostic.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have, uh, one discussion item for, for tonight. Um, it's regarding food services. And it's regarding that we have, currently have a food service management company that we brought in a few years ago and we're due for an RFP this spring. So I wanted to go over the, where, the background, where we came from, where we're at, and, um, what the numbers are year-to-date and, um, the timeline for the RFP process.
George, if we could pause for just a second. There are any students who have homework that needs to be completed?
[laughing]
Now is a good time to escape. We will do a good job with lunch.
And for all the students, remember breakfast and lunch is free this year. Keep eating, keep eating.
Yes, they didn't have a board.
Yeah. They weren't here for me. All right, so everyone else wants to hear about food services.
[laughing]
Shocked that nobody left.
All right, so just give a little background. As stated, during fiscal years 2015 and 16, uh, the Board of Education directed the district administration to explore the food service options to alleviate the general fund from subsidizing the food service program. During fiscal year 16, the district issued a request for a proposal, an RFP, from, uh, food service management companies to manage the program. Uh, six food service management companies submitted a bid and an internal committee was formed to evaluate proposals. And then the committee recommended Chartwell's to serve as a district's food service management company beginning in fiscal year 2017 and who is currently managing the program as of, as of now. Um, by law, the contract is a one-year contract with four annual renewals. Uh, we had renewals in 17, 18, 19, 20, and again in 21. And then to continue, at the end of 21, we were supposed to go out for RFP at that time, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, um, the USGA issued a, a waiver with any schools that had expiring contracts that can continue as, as a one-year rollover. So, we, the board approved to continue the one-year rollover into this school year. Um, so we're continuing that for this year, but now there hasn't been any, there hasn't been any announced waivers. Going into next year, last year, they announced the waiver in January, so I was holding off as long as possible. But it doesn't appear that there's going to be a waiver this year. So we do need to move forward with, uh, RFP. Um, and the numbers I'm going to show in, in the charts, uh, for the purposes of the financials, for comparison data for fiscal year '22, numbers are either through January '22 or forecasted for a full year based on current transit activity through January of 2022. And then just a key, key, a few key items while looking at the charts. Uh, during March of '22, or March of 2020, schools were shut down due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which, um, resulted in a hit into the program. And then during fiscal year '21, again, due to the pandemic, uh, the school district experienced both in-person and remote learning and also at the secondary schools, there, there were, uh, green and white days that, uh, experienced a decrease in participation in the food service program with kids not being in school. And then, starting last year and continuing into this year, um, breakfast and lunch is free to every student through the federal government. All meals are served, uh, all meals served are federally reimbursed through the Seamless Summer Option Program called, for short, SSO. Um, and although the word "summer" is in that phrase, it's, it was a summer program that it got extended through the, through the entire school year. So, that term is going to be used a lot, so I just want to get you, get you familiar with it. So although it says "summer," it's the whole year. Um, and then under the SSO program, the federal reimbursement rates are higher compared to the National School Lunch Program, uh, which was pre-pandemic. So that's going to show, um, and we'll go over that, but that'll, that along with increased participation is going to show an increase in revenue for this year. Um, the S, the SSO program will run through, uh, June 30th of 2022. As of today, it's currently unknown whether the SSO program will continue past June 30th or if they'll go back to the National School Lunch Program and what the rates, and what the federal reimburse rates will be. And on the next slide, I know there's, this looks like a lot of data, but I'm just going to highlight a few points to it. Um, the first, the first part is the reimbursement rates under the National School Lunch Program, which was pre-pandemic. So for example, a paid breakfast, uh, was $2 by the, by the student and then $0.31 federal reimbursed. A free breakfast was a dollar eighty, a dollar and 84 cents reimbursed. Uh, a paid lunch at the elementary was $3 paid by the student and then $0.39 reimbursed. So in total, $3.39 that we were bringing in per meal. And a, a free lunch was reimbursed at $3.48. So, under the SSO, where every kid was free, um, last year, last school year, the rates were similar to the National School Lunch Program, but for this school year, the rates have almost jumped a dollar um, for both breakfast and lunch compared to the National School Lunch Program and SSO of last year. And again, under SSO, um, there was a rate for July 1st through December 31, and then those rates actually increased again at January 20, uh, January 1st by 25 cents. So we're going to see a larger reimbursement for the rest of the year per meal. Um, I know this chart's kind of small, but what I wanted to highlight here is, this is the history, um, since 2012 and projected through 2022, so almost a 10-year history of how the food service program has run financially. Um, the green, the green columns are when it was district in-house and the gray columns being managed by, um, an outside company. Um, the last two years because of the pandemic, um, we saw bigger deficits. 2020 was trending in a good direction, um, prior to March, so it was kind of interesting to see how it panned out. Um, but as of, for this year, uh, so far through January, we have a positive cash balance at, at $360,000. And if all things are equal through the rest of the year, if nothing crazy happens, uh, we'll see a, a net prof, a net gain of close to $750,000. So it's a big difference from where we were. Um, revenues, as you can see on this slide, just kind of looking at the graph, historically, they were kind of right around the same areas. We had to dip during those two years, but it really stands out, um, this school year. Same thing with expenditures, expenditures slightly higher. Again, to keep up with, one, we're purchasing more food because we're serving more food and then also because of the demand of, um, the cafeterias, we needed to add hours and additional staff in some of those cafeterias to keep up with the demand. And then this is the expenditures over revenues. So you'll see in 2022, the red line is expenditures. The, the blue, the blue columns are revenues. This will be the first year that revenues are exceeding expenditures. And this is another graph that indicates that. So this graph here looks at, um, number of meals served annually and average meals per day. Um, 2022 is through January. All the other years are, are an annual, are the annual number. Um, but what, what I want, what really stands out is the average meals per day, which is the, the red line. You can see that it's a significant jump from, um, where it was in previous years. So if we're looking at the last full school year of 2019, we were at 2,914 meals served per day. To this school year, we're at 4,447 meals per day. So it's a significant jump from where we were.
Is it primarily lunch usage or is it, uh, breakfast?
We'll get to that on the next slide, but it's a combination, it's a combination of both. They're, uh, both-
That's your softball for the day.
[laughing] So here's, here's breakfast. So breakfast, so last year we saw a spike in breakfast as well because they were free. Um, we were, especially at the elementary level, on the weekends, we were given those cereal bags to go to every, every student. Um, this year, I don't believe they're utilizing them as much, but they're stu- but because of other means, students are eating breakfast at school. So we, we saw a big jump last year and then we saw a slight increase this year from that last year, but compared to 2019, uh, which was 368 meal, breakfast- that last year, but compared to 2019, which was 368 meals, breakfasts per day versus 1,030 this school year. And the breakfast participation rate, 2019, we were at 6.87%. This school year, we're at 19.09%. Lunches, again, a significant increase. 2019, we were at 2,546 lunches per day. This year, we're at 3,417 lunches per day. And then this is the lunch participation rate. So, this year, the lunch participation rate is 63.35% of students are buying lunch, or eating lunch, that's through the cafeteria, participating in the program, versus our highest point in 2019 was 47, well, cumulative for 2019 was 47.54%. 2018 was slightly higher at 47.58, but in that historical range, it was, the high point was 47.5 versus the low point of 42, 43, where this is 20 percentage points higher. And then, this graph is revenues per meal, again, with the increased participa, participation rate, the increase in rates and participation rate, the revenue per meal is, has increased as well as the cost per meal because our biggest cost in food service is salary and benefits, the personnel. So, for serving more meals, that cost is fixed, it's decreasing the cost per meal. So, we saw a flip on that side. Any questions so far before I go through the timeline? Next steps? So, recommendation at this time, since we haven't seen a waiver from the USGA, is to complete an issue in RFP, and then due to the unknown of the SSO program, we'll request the RFP to be both under a SSO program and a National School Lunch Program, to get proposals on both, on, on both ways. We'll supply numbers for the National School Lunch Program, what it was in 2019, and then current numbers for the SSO program. Also, as we talked about last time, we'll evaluate the results in comparison with bringing back the program in-house, and then we'll need to form an internal committee to review, evaluate, and make a recommendation to the Board of Education. It will be a similar committee that we had last time, which included two board members, superintendent, treasurer, assistant superintendent, operations manager, an elementary principal, and a secondary principal or assistant principal, that will make up the committee. The time, the timeline.
Do we have it stubbed out for our retreat to discuss that?
Yeah. And then, the process, by the end of this month, I would like to complete the RFP if sooner. Prior to going live, it needs to be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education for a review. Once it goes live, we have to have it live for 30 days. So, following this timeline, it will go live through March 16th through April 15th. During that time, after 10 days after it's been posted, we, we are required to have a pre-bid meeting with interested, with interested bidders. So, we'll have that scheduled the week of April 4th. And then, the week after the RFP is due is spring break, so the week of April 25th through 29th, we'll have the administrative evaluation of the RFPs, followed by, in early May, followed by vendor interviews if necessary and evaluation. And then, after the committee makes a recommendation, we have to negotiate a contract with the RFP, or with a vendor, which would then need to be reviewed and approved by the Ohio Department of Education, and then it could come to the Board of Education for, for a recommendation, and then Board of Education action. So, with any of these dates, I do want to move, these, these dates are set now, but I would like to move them up if possible as we're working through it. So, but to have it rather prove that the first meeting in June versus the second meeting in June, in case the summer program does continue past July 1. So, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions?
The, do we have a list of other school districts that are doing the same? Or can we get a list?
I can ask around.
I think it'd be useful for us to know who else is in, in the same process.
That's going out for bid this year?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, we, you and I have discussed this before, but, you know, with the economy and the state that it is, it is, it is just going to be interesting.
Yeah, it is going to be, there's, there's a lot of unknowns, especially with the SSO, because every, it's free for everybody right now. And then, there are supply chains issues. And the one thing I do want to state, Donna, our current manager, she is doing a phenomenal job keeping things afloat. There are daily, she puts in orders through GFS, and it's either out of stock, not delivered, there are supply chain issues, and she is driving to GFS's in, all over northeast Ohio on her own, looking to make sure that our menu, our menu doesn't change. For her, keeping that menu consistent and not having changes to that menu that was issued is a big priority for her, and she's doing a phenomenal job of managing the program and keeping it afloat. And not just her, there's a lot of demand on our food service workers, in the cafeteria, and our managers, and the line workers, the hourly staff, and they're doing a phenomenal job keeping up with the demand and, and serving all the kids. So, I just wanted to acknowledge everyone involved in the food service program for the work that they're doing.
So, we thank them for their efforts. Again, it's, it's much appreciated. You know, we've talked about it before, and, you know, prior to the pandemic, we were looking at this and, and using it as an opportunity to, to say, how can we, you know, bring to bear better, better results for our district? And candidly, with the economy the way it is, the, the issues that we're having, just bringing food in, et cetera, every business is having, regardless of the business, it is, whether it's transportation, whether it's manufacturing, it is an adventure every day. So, we'll go through the process. I think it's wise to, as, when we can, to accelerate our dates, because we're going to get to points where we're going to need more time. So, if we can front-load some of that, and then, then when things don't, when schedules get messed up, we have a little bit of leeway. So, I, I compliment you on having a good plan. Anybody else have any questions? So, for the board, the important part is who the two reps are. It is a very difficult process to go through when the companies want you to sample their wares, so that's something to think about.
And I would like to make, have that.
I know George took that very seriously.
No, select it at the board retreat if we could select the two board members at that point.
Yeah, we, we will, we will make sure to get that selection accomplished at the retreat so that we're not holding ourselves up. Excellent.
Thank you.
Dr. Reba, you're next.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Miko. At this time, I'm going to ask some of my colleagues to come up to their seats. As they are, George is going to disconnect from his projector. I'll connect. It's like a tribunal over here. It's a huge group. It's great. So, as you know, what we started with our work sessions is having a, a group of staff members that have taken on, are either new to our district, or have taken on new positions in our district based on the, the federal funding that we receive, the ARPESR funds. So, we, we've heard from some of our EL staff, we've heard from our gifted coordinator, heard about the science of reading, and now we're here to learn about what's going on in our student services department. And I'm going to let Andy do the introductions and the, the roles and responsibilities that are in front of you. The board members, you have in front of you the slides that they'll present. I did want to make a note that just because of the size of the, the file, they have some slides in the show, in the slide deck, that I did not print off, the, the ones that deal with, if, when they go through quotes, that's not in your packet, but the rest of the slides are. So, Andy, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. My name's Andy Trheal, I'm the Director of Student Services. I'm super excited to be here tonight because this is the work we do every day. This is the stuff I'm passionate about because this is the evidence-based work we do in education in a premier district to make sure every kid learns. So, this is something ever since I was a teacher, and early as a principal, that I held closely to my heart. What are scientific ways we can make sure that kids learn, all kids learn, and how do we know this? And that was always very important to me. I never wanted to guess. I wanted to be able to monitor kids throughout a school year, and work with my teachers, and make sure, hey, we want to make sure every kid is going to make more and more growth. So, I'm very excited to be up here with this great group of folks up here, great educators. This is a sampling of great educators that are doing, what they're going to sample to you, the work we're doing every day, to make sure kids learn. So, right now, we have our MTS coordinators, RTI intervention specialists, and special ed coach. So, we have Lindsay Arnt and Michelle Varelli, who have been school psychologists in our district for several years, many years, and they are MTSS coordinators. That's multi-tiered systems of support. That's been, I don't know how much we know about that, but we're going to talk about that throughout our presentation this evening, too. Ann McDevitt, Special Education Coach, who's been an intervention specialist in our district for a long time now, right? Not too long, but long enough, right? And then we have RTI intervention specialists, new to our district this year. Very lucky to find these two folks, Carson Moore and Melissa Gerchinsky, okay? And so, each one of the folks up here is going to get a chance to kind of go through the presentation, tell you specifically what they do. You'll see some data graphs, not about breakfast, George, but about how kids learn. And so, Cameron, would it be the one to the right? Yeah, okay. So, there's our introduction there, and we're going to start off with Lindsay Arnt, talking about multi-tiered systems of support. Lindsay?
Hi, so we're here tonight to talk with you about each of our roles within our multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, which is, you know, a lot what it sounds like. It's, it's our system of multiple tiers of instruction, and it's our way that we provide support to all of our students. And so, our first kind of line of action is that we're going to, we strive to provide strong tier-one core instruction to all of our students, in the hopes that we can meet the needs of most of our students by providing high-quality, research-based tier-one instruction. And then, our, the multiple tiers part are tiers two and three. So, the kids that, you know, demonstrate a need for additional services or interventions, we meet their needs by continuing to provide them with good core instruction, but also providing them with additional interventions and services in tiers two and tiers three. And there's a lot of research, research that shows that MTSS leads to improve student outcomes across social, emotional functioning, behavior, and academic skills. So, that's MTSS in general. If you look at this visual upfront, you know, we talk about these triangles or cones as our way to kind of visually represent MTSS. And so, on either side of this cone, there's the academic side, which is response to intervention, or RTI, and then the other side is behavior or social, emotional functioning, and you've probably heard about PBIS, or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And so, both of those things kind of fit under that umbrella of MTSS. Research shows us that a healthy PBIS or RTI system strives to have 80% of student needs met within tier-one. So, tier-one instruction on the academic side is really good, research-based instruction, where we're meeting the needs, we're providing this to all of our students, we're providing, you know, early interventions, we're responding quickly to students who are not responding to that tier-one instruction, and we are universally screening, or have, have some pieces of data where we're looking at, we, we assess all students, and we can identify them, then who needs more than what tier-one can provide. On the other side of that cone is the behavior side, and again, these are universal interventions, what we're providing to all. So, PBIS, teaching those expectations to all students, having positive incentives for students, for all students, having effective classroom management. And then again, having ways to identify which students are not responding to tier-one and may need more. So, then tier-two is provided in addition to tier-one, and we're looking, again, we're looking for that healthy system where 10 to 15% would fit, would fit within that tier-two. So, this is some of our students who, we use different measures to determine who's at risk and needs this tier-two intervention. We're looking at targeted, small-group intervention, where we're then not just assessing a couple times a year, but we're, we're checking their progress weekly or monthly to make sure that what we're doing is, is effective for them. And then again, we're striving for about only 5 to 10% needing tier-three, to, to that highest level of intervention, where now we're providing intensive, individualized interventions. We're doing additional assessment to make sure that kids are getting exactly what they need, and we're tracking progress even more frequently, daily to weekly with progress monitoring. So, again, we're making sure that what we're doing is leading to positive change and positive outcomes for kids. And so, that's MTSS, RTI, PBIS, kind of in a summary. Any questions about that before we move forward?
How are the percent, are the percentages a standard, or is that our experience?
The percentages are what we're striving for. And so, you're going to see, I'm going to show you some cones of our academic data, which, we're not there yet in, in some grades, especially with the impact of the pandemic and the, you know, remote learning times and instructional loss. It's what we strive for by the end of the year. You're going to see some data of, just some examples of our fall data and our winter data, but we're striving for that 80% by the end of the year. I'll also say, though, that especially in grades three through five, most of our stu, most of our grades and most of our buildings are hitting that 80% or above already by, by winter, that we're actually at like 90% within that tier-one, in a lot of cases with our reading and math skills.
So, I would just add to that real quickly, that I look at this as a temperature check. So, what I mean by that is, you know, you take the temperature, and if it looks like this, you got a normal temperature, you're doing good, it's healthy, right? If your 80 is higher, then you're doing awesome, and if you, if you're less than 80, and that 15 and that five's too big, then you're maybe a little sick and you got something to do about it.
And what we also use that standard for is if we're far off from that 80%, and you'll see that we have been in some cases, especially post-pandemic, we can't talk about how we're going to intervene in a, in a strategic way for potentially 50% of our class. We first have to talk about what changes are we going to make to tier-one so that we can effectively meet the needs of all students. So, as Andy said, I'm one of the MTSS coordinators. I'm assigned to the preschool and all the elementary schools. So, at, at this point, my focus has really been on the RTI side of, side of the cone, especially because our elementary schools and preschool have a, you know, they're all working on their PBIS and making sure, you know, have goals of improving their tier-one PBIS with PBIS committees. So, my focus has really been on the RTI. So, at the preschool level, RTI is a fairly new thing for preschool, and so, my, my two big focuses at the preschool level is that I'm supporting the preschool staff as they've begun to administer universal screening assessments to our, to our three-to-six-year-olds at the preschool level. And so, those assessments are looking at early literacy, early math skills, and kindergarten readiness skills. And so, the, actually, the RTI intervention specialist at the preschool has been administering those. She did a fall benchmark and a winter benchmark, and we're using that data, and I'm helping them to interpret that data to identify what kinds of changes do we need to make to our preschool core instruction, what kinds of intervention needs are there that we can target for smaller groups of students? And so, that's, that's brand-new this year, and so, I'm just supporting them in that. So, for example, one, in the fall, we noticed that one area of weakness for most of our three-to-six-year-olds was rhyming. And so, we at that time, and, and these assessments have, they kind of separate by who's not where they need to be, who's approaching where they need to be, and who's where they need to be. And so, in the fall, we noticed that this was a big area of need. Only 25% of our three-to-six-year-olds were where they needed to be with rhyming. And so, that was something that we targeted for all of our students. So, each teacher, you know, thought about how, how they could incorporate more rhyming practice and intervention in their core instruction, and we saw from fall to winter that we improved that number from 25% to 41%, just by targeting that for all. And then, we're also working on, you know, working with the preschool staff to identify what are research-based interventions for pre-academic skills, because that's fairly new. You know, we, we know a lot about early, about elementary research-based interventions, but preschool's fairly new. So I'm working with the preschool staff on that and helping them to identify effective interventions and develop intervention plans for our youngest students. At the elementary level, we've had a pretty good system in place for several years. We, you know, we universally assess our students in the fall, winter, and spring using curriculum-based measures. We've had a structure where we meet as data teams five times a year. So we meet in the fall, we meet in November, we meet in January, we meet again in March, and then again at the end of the year. So we're systematically looking at our students' progress. So we've had that in place for a while. So my focus has really been on improving our system and building consistency across all five elementary buildings. So I've really been working to improve the preventative reading and math interventions that we have for our at-risk students, and using data to make sure that we're identifying very specific skill deficits so that the interventions are very specifically matched to what the student needs. And then we're identifying, you know, data collection tools to make sure that we're assessing the right thing as they're moving through those interventions, so that we know whether or not our interventions are effective. And then I'm helping coach the teams on making database decisions for students. In order to help build consistency, I've been leading and facilitating all of the data meetings across all five elementary schools. I developed an RTI guidance document to help, again, lead the teams through that process that we're looking for while I'm modeling that process. Each school's, their resources and personnel are a little bit different, so we work through, here's what our data is saying, here's what our students are needing, who are we going to use, and how are we going to make sure that we're most effectively using our resources to meet our students' needs? And then adjusting supports that are needed for staff based on building needs. And then we have had an MTSS handbook in place for several years, but working to revise that, so that's an additional support for our staff moving forward. So what kind of impact am I having in this position? So I got some input from some of the staff that I work with. Kelly Barrett, who's a Title I teacher, said that with me being there to help kind of sort through the data and have everything organized ahead of time, we're getting to really use our short amount of time together to focus on what students need. And so, you know, we're making sure that we're matching the appropriate intervention to the area of deficit. Mr. Dietrich, the principal at Kinsner, said that, you know, we're matching, we're matching the intervention to the deficit, but we're also focusing on what all students need. Because as I, as I kind of talked about, after the pandemic, we have more students who are in need. So we're making sure we're talking about what kind of changes to our core instruction do we need to make. Just a couple other things. Mr. Griffin said that, you know, students are getting exactly what they need. We're really trying to match our interventions to the specific skill deficit rather than having just kind of global interventions. We're also really working, the literacy coach at a couple of our buildings, Monica Cooney has noted that I've provided the teams with a lot of resources for interventions, including specific scripts for how to carry those out, so that she as a coach can use those when she's coaching teams, to make sure that we're, we're carrying out the interventions the way that they're supposed to be carried out. And then Mrs. Riley, who's a first-grade teacher, she noted that with the process that we're using and the targeted intervention that she's providing, she's seeing that her students are thriving and that achievement gaps are closing. And so here's some of the data. You know, I showed you what that cone looks like, and here is, you know, our curriculum-based measure is called AIMS Web Plus. We use it to assess our students in reading and math. So this is one example of some fall-to-winter data. So this is a kindergarten example, the whole grade of kindergarten at one of our buildings. You can see that in the fall, only 48% of our students within that building were, you know, at benchmark or within tier-one. We had more than half of the grade in need of some sort of intervention. So our conversation was about what kind of changes do we need to make to tier-one instruction, and then how are we going to meet the needs of all of those students? By the winter, and we just, you know, we met with them at the end of January, that percentage hasn't improved from 48% to 66%. Tier-three, you can see, it's visually very powerful. We reduced, we were at 31% was in tier-three, down to 15% in tier-three. And so to make this, you know, real, that we're talking about students, in the fall, there were 22 kids that were in tier-three. Nine of those kids moved to tier-one, demonstrating no need for intervention anymore. And four of those kids moved to tier-two, demonstrating a, you know, lesser degree of a need. We had 15 kids that were in tier-two to start the school year, 11 of them moved up to tier-one, again, demonstrating no need for intervention anymore. We also have some growth data that is showing that we're improving at a rate that is higher than what we were, how our progress was looking during the 1920s school year, pre-pandemic. So we're seeing a lot of really positive growth in our students.
Lindsay, it's accurate to say, when we look at these charts, we're not comparing apples to apples, right? The standard changes from fall to winter, so kids are expected to, you know, achieve at a higher level or demonstrate higher-level skills in winter, correct?
Yes. So from fall to winter to spring, the assessments that they are given are similar, but the expectation goes up. And so not only are we seeing more kids meet the expectation, they're all meeting a higher expectation as the year goes on as well. And this is just an example of this, so I forgot to mention, of, if you can go back, Andy. So then we did have, you know, a lot of students who were receiving intervention. And so as of January 20th, of the students who were receiving intervention and being progress monitored with their letter sounds, 88% of those students were projected to meet their goal by the end of the year. And if you go to the next one, this is an example of an individual student's goal. And so the black line is their goal line, and we set individual goals for each student based upon their baseline score. The green line is this individual student's trend line. And so you can see, this is a student who's making wonderful progress. The goal was to improve by about one sound per week, and then the student's progressing by more than two sounds per week. So this would be a student that we would talk about, what, do they still need this intervention or not? Sometimes the graphs are not this positive, but that's when we talk about, what do we need to change to make sure that we're closing gaps? And then this is just another example, a different building. This is second-grade math data. Again, we started the year with only 62% within tier-one. By winter, we were at 81% within tier-one, and now we're getting to more of that healthy system. So in the fall, we talked about what do we need to change in our core instruction? Now by, by the winter, you know, we're at 81% in green, only 11 in yellow, and eight in red. We're at that healthy system now, where we're, we're showing that our, our core instruction is doing what it's supposed to do. So now, how do we meet the needs of the students who are in those other two tiers? Again, to make this very real, in the fall, there were 29 students that were in the red or in tier-three, nine of them moved to tier-one, and 11 of them moved to tier-two. In the fall, we had 21 students who were in tier-two, and 17 of them moved up to tier-one, demonstrating no need for intervention anymore. So again, and this is just another example of an individual student's progress. And so when we meet, we take a look at this kind of data, and we look at each student's graph to see, you know, are they progressing at a rate that is expected? And if not, what do we need to change so that we're meeting their needs?
Can you share some examples of things that you've, whether it's the kindergarten or the second grade? You said we need to make adjustments to what we're doing. Can you give me some examples of what that is?
Sure. So, you know, in each building, like I said, there's different supports available, but so let's talk about kindergarten. So we have students who are receiving maybe a double dose of our foundation's multisensory phonics program, where they're really working on their letter sound drills, and they're doing phonemic awareness intervention. And some of our students are working in a much smaller group, maybe for a longer amount of time, with a very specialized interventionist. So maybe like Mrs. Gerchinsky down there, maybe the one that's providing that intervention, whereas other students were not demonstrating as high of a need, so they're in a larger group, maybe meeting for a smaller amount of time, and they're targeting a little bit of a higher skill. So if a student's not progressing, we may move them to a more intensive group, or we may change the intervention to something else. If we notice that, you know, they're not making progress with their phonemic awareness skills, which we know are, you know, huge, a huge factor in later reading skills, we're maybe going to change that intervention to focus more time on those phonemic awareness skills. Did that answer your question? So then what are just a few other things that I've been working on? We're working to start a new database to track our interventions. It's called Performance Matters, and student data and intervention groups will, you know, all be entered in there so that it, it will follow students across buildings, and when they move on to the middle school and the high school, we'll be able to see what interventions have been done for each student, and we won't have to start new. So we're working on getting this program up and running. I've been training and supporting some volunteer teachers and piloting that. I've been training building leaders in that, so they can support the implementation. And then we're planning for systematic implementation of that for March of 2022. Again, so that we can make sure that our data is documented and communicated across buildings and grade levels. I've also been doing a lot of training and coaching, any new staff, I've trained them in our assessments and our intervention and in the process in general, and just coaching teams and making database decisions. And then I, as you're aware, we've had a substitute shortage that has really impacted the, the way that we've done things before. And so when we were getting ready to do our winter benchmark this year, we realized that we weren't going to be able to get this done in a timely manner because of the substitute shortages. And so I worked to problem-solve that and was able to recruit and train Cleveland State graduate students in the school psychology program. They came out, and we went to each building, and we just had an army of people come out and assess our students, and we were able to get all of our students assessed in the month of January, which is important because now kids can get timely targeted intervention rather than having to wait until we could get those assessments done. And then lastly, so Michelle is the MTSS coordinator for the middle school and high school, and so we're talking about how are we going to make sure that we can make this transition from elementary school to middle school more seamless? So we're going to work together to develop at-risk lists for students who are fifth graders as we start to plan for their transition to middle school, and also make sure that elementary interventions are communicated to the middle school. So again, everyone's aware of what students are needing to make progress.
So again, I'm Michelle Borelli. It was interesting to hear a few of the public comments about teenagers today, because I think, again, we can all agree, teenagers can be challenging, and I would say the same about doing MTSS at the secondary level. Because again, as Lindsay said, we've had a well-established system at the elementary for, for years now, and she's just working to make it very consistent across the buildings. So you may not see the same types of data in my presentation, because we are really creating a system here. I wanted to point out where there are similarities in what we're doing, and then where there are some differences. Some of the similarities are obviously the using the data, and also has she mentioned a lot of teaming and collaborating with the meetings throughout the year. We have that also in place at both the middle school and the high school. And another similarity is that we are also working to improve systems that currently exist, and even trying to brainstorm ways to create new systems. So where, where we get a little different is we're, we're looking, when we're thinking about middle school and high school, obviously, a lot has, the challenges come with the schedules, and, you know, the students needing to earn credits in order to graduate, there's just a lot more complexities at these levels. So when a student is struggling, we know that it may be more than just an academic skill problem. So we're going to look at other pieces of data. So we're looking at academic skills, as Lindsay described, but we're also going to look at attendance, a student's behavior, which could be disciplinary referrals, and we're also going to look at social-emotional needs. So these would be factors that can impact a student, and we're considering, you know, these are changeable factors, though, because we know there's a lot of things that can impact any one of us, but these are things that we can influence within the school. So again, we're looking at collecting universal data, like, like Lindsay described, but on all of four of these factors. And we also have, we tend to integrate the two systems, the PBIS system and the Response to Intervention system at the secondary level. So there are, each of the schools has two teams, so one PBIS and one RTI at the middle school, and the same at the high school. And I'll tell you a bit more about what we've been doing, but you'll get to meet with two of the wonderful teammates that I have here that participate in those teams, and the good work that's going through with those. So I think this visual kind of steps you through the process of what we've been doing. I know Lindsay started by mentioning at-risk. I think you'll hear each one of us talk about at-risk. And so really what we're speaking there is when we're trying to identify which students are at risk, we're talking about they're at risk of poor educational outcomes. So that's where we know we want to assess all four of those areas. And then one of the first steps we did is we wanted to come up with our criteria for each of those four areas. So I have met extensively with the administrators and the school counselors in determining what the criteria would be. For instance, there's, that shows you what we're looking at for academics. So as Lindsay described AIMS Web Plus and showed you some graphs, we also have some norm-referenced assessments at the middle school, but we also include state testing, which is available to all students at both, at the secondary level, as well as grades. At the high school, we also consider credit status and those kinds of things, too, that relates to academics. In terms of attendance, we're looking at not necessarily days, but the hours that a student is attending, and we, we have all kinds of reports that we can look at. Attendance has been, you know, a significant issue, as you can imagine, since the pandemic, so we're still seeing some real problems there. In terms of behavior, like I mentioned, we're looking at disciplinary referrals for students. So we, a student could have any one of these risk factors. And the final one there, social-emotional, what we're doing there is we're having our school counselors and our social workers, they are the ones that identify which students have the social-emotional needs, since they know they're students. And it could be students that have actual mental health diagnoses, but it could also be students that are just showing difficulty coping, difficulty relating with others, those types of things. So once we had established the criteria for at-risk, then we actually looked at all students, and like I said, if they showed even just one of those areas, they went onto our list or our spreadsheet. So once we have that list, then we are able to see which students have an academic need, which students have attendance, behavior, social-emotional. And this list, or spreadsheet, which is getting very, very long, as you can imagine, and wide, is shared with all the principals, the teachers, and the counselors, so that they can keep watching how their students are progressing as well. And like I said, I've had the privilege of working with the two teams at both schools, and the teams are composed of, are very representative. There's teachers, administrators, counselors, school psychologists, academic coaches, intervention specialists, just a whole lot of people. And honestly, it's probably one of the highlights is when we have our meetings, because it's very energizing and it's very solution-focused when we meet. I would say a difference this year, there's always been, this data has always existed, and there's even been lists that I've been able to uncover. There were lists like this before, before I came along. But the difference, I think, is that we have the opportunity to look for the themes within the data, so we can see where there are patterns and trends. We can see, for example, at the middle school, where there are teams at each grade level, we can see, okay, which teams are being more successful in the data, you know, when we look at the data. And then maybe at the high school, we might say, oh, which department? So we're saying, oh, look at the math department, they're finding a lot of success with their students. So we can kind of like uncover these types of things at our meetings, and then also discuss solutions and supports. And then within the, the idea of this is, again, to look at our current systems. So our teams reviewed our current system. So you'll see in a bit some examples of what I'm saying, when I'm saying systems, of what we have currently, and then we look to see, how can we improve on those current systems? And then I have, the team is constantly wanting to brainstorm new systems, too. So I said, well, let's talk about what we have right now and see where we can go from there before we try to create something new, but it, really, some good things are coming out of those meetings. So each of us, you'll see, that we, we gathered some information. So these are some members of the teams that I'm with, and just some positives, I think, again, the meetings go very well, I can't say that enough, just to have the meeting of the minds with these different ideas. So I work with, Cheryl Beazov is a special education department chair and the transition coordinator for the middle school and the high school. Holly Ruman is an excellent teacher that we have at the middle school, sixth-grade level, and Kim Scott is a math coach that works at both the middle school and high school. So again, just there, just the impact of the teamwork is that we're coming together to find those strong solutions. So again, these are some of the So again, these are some of the systems. So for me, I've been at the high school for a few years here, but the middle school is fairly new to me. So I really had to get familiar and I'm still learning a lot about the different systems that are already in place. So just to kind of, just to go over these kind of quickly here, but just to tell you where they're coming from. So this is, could be, and some of these could be at both settings, but some are just at one or the other. So at the middle school, we have, every student has a daily IE period, which stands for Intervention Enrichment. We also have a variety of online learning platforms that have been purchased or accessible for the teachers and the students at both levels. At the middle school, we have, the counselors run student support meetings. And I was just really surprised again, because they have a lot to do, that they do this and they meet every month with every teacher. So every team is met with, once a month, with the counselors. We have small group counseling available at both levels. We also have co-taught classes, which means they're taught by an intervention specialist and a general education teacher at both levels. We have a program that was started last year that's called Check-In/Check-Out. And as Lindsay described the tiers to you, it's a tier-two intervention for behavior. And it's definitely improved this year because we now have Carson, who you'll hear from in a bit, monitoring that program and really bringing a lot to it. We also have school counselors who provide classroom lessons as part of tier-one. And on the right side, we see that there's various academic programs that we have, just to kind of point out, the Algebra I, a few years ago, we were finding that students were not able to master the concepts that are needed in algebra. So the change was made to divide that into two parts for some of our students. So there's Algebra I, Part One, that you take during your freshman year. And then as a sophomore, you take Algebra I, Part Two. And I'll talk a bit more about some of those others in terms of how we're looking to improve some of these things in a minute. So again, Lindsay and I, we love the pyramid, the cone, the triangle, so you see it again here. So what I wanted to highlight there with the arrow is again, really honing in on the 80%. And we want to see, we really like to see if our data is at 80% or, I mean, we used to say, like, when I worked in elementary, they'd be like, go green, like, everybody wanted a full, solid, green cone would be like the coolest thing ever. So if you could have like 80%, though, we, like Andy said, we would feel like it's a healthy system. So with the data that we've been collecting at the middle school, we're not quite there, you know, in terms of the academic piece, because we are looking at a lot. We're looking at the state testing, we're looking at the reading and math skills, and then we're also looking at grades, which is your overall functioning and managing things as a teenager. So all of those things, we're not quite where we would want to be, but that's where we're striving to improve our systems because that's the direction we need to go since we're not quite at that 80% for academic benchmarks. This is again, I think the data piece has been, I think everybody's just been really pleased with it. This is just a sampling of, again, people that have different vested interests in the data. Tara Bruski is one of our school counselors at the high school. And the counselors, you'll hear about this, but they are identifying students who are most at-risk at the middle school and the high school for success plans. So to have that data accessible for them has been helpful. And then on the right side, Jennifer Wazalowski is an RTI intervention specialist, just like you'll hear from Carson and Melissa in a few minutes. She serves the role at the high school. So again, these are, I just, this is that same one, but I just wanted to highlight a few of the ways that where I say we're strengthening our support systems. So again, where we're looking to see, like, the daily IE, that's usually around the lunchtime. So it's a short amount of time, but again, it's built into the schedule. So we want to take a look at where is that being used most effectively? So some teams, they designate certain days of the week that we're going to focus in on math and language arts. And you can, Carson will actually attest to this too, that she provides some intervention during those time periods for math. So again, just making sure we're utilizing the time that's already built in the schedule the best we can. In terms of student support meetings, they used to tend to be a place where you would talk maybe about one or two students. But now we're changing the focus to be more solution focused and talk about, okay, so what systems do you have in place to address some needs of the students and what's working, what's not working? So again, rather than talk about one or two students, they might be able to problem solve, now we're talking about it in a much broader terms. And I think the teachers are feeling, so far, that's a new process, we've just begun, but everybody's feeling, again, more energized rather than coming out feeling like, oh, the world's on their shoulders of all the problems. You know, we can talk about what's working and we can share that with other teams as well. And on the right side, we have improved, the success plans is a fairly new process. So again, those are for our most, the students maybe that would be like in that red tier-three zone, those are students that are meeting three out of the four criteria. So they might have an academic problem, they might be having some behavior issues, whether it's corrective learning or suspensions or something like that, but then they also might have an attendance issue. So for those students, and it could be any one of those three categories, they receive a success plan, which each of our counselors meets individually with them. And even as young as sixth grade, they start to talk about, okay, what are your plans for after graduation? So it starts some career planning and really points out to them, you're not on the right road, you know, where you're going right now and how can we help you to get there? So it's a nice process of seeing a lot of collaboration. But again, right now where we are, it's a lot of kids, so it's kind of overwhelming. So that's why we have to improve our system so that that process is really, the success plans is really just for a smaller number of students. Okay, and again, this is just talking about, I think, I think what you'll hear most about MTSS and why I think it means so much to us. You might notice we get excited because as school psychologists, you only had the influence of a few students each year that would be on your caseload. And you get heavily involved in each student, but then it's like, then you move on to your next case. Whereas this is again, it's looking at all students. You feel like you have a broader impact and you get to work with, you know, a variety of people that you wouldn't normally get to do. And I really think it's making a difference so far, but, you know, it's new at the secondary level yet. Okay, so then as we look to see how we're going to transition from middle to high school, as Lindsay had talked about, how we're going to transition our fifth graders, obviously, we're going to have the data on our eighth graders, since it's my list in both places that we're going to be able to transition over. We're already looking at scheduling classes and thinking about needs for students at the ninth grade. And obviously, as Lindsay had said, any students that are, we found, the data has shown, some interventions that have been helpful, we want to make sure, obviously, those continue on as they transition to the high school. And then, again, just the whole, everything about MTSS is it's well-known. Again, we get excited because we've heard about this probably back in graduate school and things are finally, you know, it was just exciting to see it come to the district in such a pronounced way here. So we know that if we continue with fidelity to implement it, we are going to continue to see improved outcomes for students in terms of learning and achievement, which obviously fits the district goals here. But we're also going to see improved social climate as there will be a disruption, reduction in the disruptive behavior, increased social competence and increased emotional regulation in our students.
Okay, so I am-
How do we measure that? Two years from now, what am I going to look at?
I would say, again, we'll probably look at that same data. I mean, again, we kind of laugh about the cone, but it really is, you know, a good standard, as you had asked, is that a standard? So as long as we continue to collect this data, again, we're hoping that we're going to start seeing that our systems are working and improving. So we're going to start seeing those numbers. In terms of academic benchmarks, we'd want to see higher than 80. But in terms of like behaviors and things of that sort, obviously want to see those reduce, you know, a reduction in those things as well.
So is it too much to say I should see a reduction in, in-
Discipline.
Discipline at the high school?
Yeah, and that I didn't cover too much because again, we're talking about the academic side of things more. But each month, these teams meet-
Detentions, that was the word I was looking for.
What was that?
Detentions.
Detentions, yes. And that is one of the things, again, yeah, we are tracking all that through our PBIS team. So we're looking at, we really want to see, obviously, the goal is to have teachers give out and staff members give out more positives than consequences and we are collecting that data. The middle school's a little further along in the process with PBIS in terms of that, but we have all kinds of, again, charts, graphs that we're looking at where we can see the trend and are we seeing decline in detentions and those types of things.
I'm looking forward to it. I think it's fascinating.
I have a question before we move on. The data that Lindsay showed us before with the different graphs, the green and the red, how many years' worth of that do we have or is this brand new?
It's not brand new. So we've had Ames Web Plus since 1718, I think.
And so we have these, is there a way for the board to see the years beside one another?
You know, so I thought about bringing some year-to-year data. The tough part is we're looking at different groups of students each year.
Sure, sure. That's what I was getting at.
The data is there, but we're, you know, if we look at second grade math data year after year, those are different kids year after year.
Right.
So we would need to interpret it with that in mind.
Sure.
And that's the first year of Ames Web Plus, but we had Ames Web 1.0 way before that too. So it's been, it's been a while.
It's been at least 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
So send it to Cameron. Cameron will send it to the board and those of us who wish to geek out on it will.
I mean, the people who wish to geek out on it are my kind of people.
You don't have to send it to the entire board.
Thank you.
Okay, so Carson and I are going to talk a little bit about our role as RTI intervention specialists. Again, I am Melissa Graczynski. I work at Kinsner and Moraski Elementary. And so our main role this year, if you think back to that cone, Andy, has been focused on those tier-two students. So those students that, you know, we met at the beginning of the year and we identified them as needing more intensive, small group instruction or intervention, either in academics or behavior. In my particular role this year, I have been focused on reading intervention. So two of the ways that I've supported the district this year have been through data collection and data analysis. So really, within the first week of school, I started pulling some of our students and giving them a phonics assessment and a phonemic awareness assessment. And this was given to all of our kindergarten and first grade students. And then any students, second through fifth, who were either identified at the end of the previous school year as, you know, requiring or, you know, flagged as being below average in reading or any other student at the beginning of the school year that teachers were possibly concerned about. And so these assessments, along with our Ames Web, with my help, you know, they got done a lot sooner in the year, so we were able to hold our data meetings earlier and start these interventions a lot sooner this year. I'm also responsible for conducting and assisting with our weekly progress monitoring of our tier-two students. So again, depending on the intervention these students are receiving, each week, they might be given a reading passage and we want to see an increase in their words correct per minute, if they're receiving intervention and reading fluency, if their area of intervention is phonics. Maybe we're giving them a passage with a particular phonics pattern and we want to see if they're mastering that phonics skill. And then, as Lindsay mentioned, the Performance Matters Program, I've been a part of piloting that. So I've been putting, been putting all of the information, I've been compiling and collecting on my students in that program as well. And then because I'm a huge part of working with students and collecting data on students, I also look at the data and analyze it. So I've attended all of our MTSS meetings where I, you know, looked at that data and making, ensuring that, working with the team, we're putting students in interventions that are appropriate for the students. And these are just a few comments from staff on how my support in this area has helped this year. So Katie Hawk, again, mentioned that I have been a part of making those data-informed decisions. I think a lot of times when you have students that might struggle in an area, it's good to have multiple perspectives from people and multiple people collecting data and observing students. So I've been able to help with that and again, make sure students are receiving appropriate interventions. And then Mary Mattress, a second grade teacher, mentioned that her students are being monitored with fidelity. So in years past, these tier-two students did require this weekly progress monitoring, but it was typically done by classroom teachers. So now I've been able to help assist with that. And you can see in Mary's case, 13 of her 23 students required this extra progress monitoring. So with my help, it's ensured that this is getting done every week and then it's also freed up time for classroom teachers to focus on their tier-one instruction. Next, I'll talk a little bit about what I think is the most important part of my job this year, and that is providing that targeted, individualized, small group instruction to those tier-two students. And I will mention that I also do work with a few students with disabilities as an intervention specialist. If they, if their IEP goals and reading align with what I'm doing with my tier-two students, I do provide some intervention for those students as well. And again, these interventions are taking place daily for about 30 minutes per day. Fridays are typically left for progress monitoring. So at least a minimum of four days a week, these students are receiving these targeted interventions. And again, depending on the area that they were identified as needing intervention in, I might be providing intervention in phonemic awareness using our HIGRITY program. So again, that's things like helping students identify rhyming words or segmenting words. So that's typically done with some of our kindergarten, first grade students who are just starting to develop some of those early literacy skills. And then for some of our older students, they might need support in the area of fluency. So again, working with them on improving their accuracy and speed when reading. I've also been able to be an additional resource for parents. I know we just got done with parent-teacher conferences and oftentimes we get questions from parents, they want to know how to help their child or they're not sure what reading level they're on or how to, you know, get reading materials for their child that are appropriate for them. So because I'm working with these students every day, observing them, assessing them, I know where they're at and I've been able to send home weekly activities that are reinforcing the skills that I'm doing with them. So parents are also a part of that help as well. I'm also the case manager for students enrolled in our SOLO program. So that's students that are part of our online learning program. So those students receive most of their instruction. These are students that are on IEPs, I should mention as well. And these are students who receive most of their instruction asynchronously, but they do receive their special education services with a teacher. So I've been meeting with those students either virtually or some of them do come into the building for their services with me. We work on their IEP goals and then I'm tracking their progress on those. And this is, again, similar to graphs that Lindsay has shown. So this is an example of a student that I have been working with. And this is a fourth grade student who, at the beginning of the year, was identified as needing some intervention in the area of reading fluency. So again, they had those good decoding skills down, but based on some of the early data we collected, they, their accuracy was a little bit lower when reading in passages and their speed was a little bit lower. So I began working with this student, again, four days a week. And the intervention that I used primarily is called a fluency development lesson. So that's where a passage is selected, that's on a student's reading level, it's typically between 50 to 200 words. And the student is given multiple times to read this passage. It's usually modeled by me first, then the student might read it with a partner, they might just read it multiple times. And again, the reasoning behind this is the more they practice that passage, they'll obviously read it more fluently, but at the same time, they'll, their reading comprehension will improve as well, the more often they read the passage. So you can see this student, they were progress monitored every week and they were given a fourth grade passage. And we wanted to see an increase in their words correct per minute. So again, the black line is the goal that we had set for them, where we wanted them to achieve. And the green line is where this student was actually progressing. So the goal was that they would be able to increase an additional 1.2 words per, words per week. So again, adding another 1.2 words per week on the assessment, their actual rate of improvement was 2.2. So again, they were surpassing the goal that we had set for them. And actually, when we recently had our last round of data meetings, it was determined that this student no longer needed intervention and fluency, but they were moved to a comprehension group. So again, that's an example of how students, you know, an intervention might change based on how students are performing. And then I'll just end with some additional comments from staff on how my support has helped them and their students this year. So Amy Valentine mentioned that she, her students are receiving daily- students are receiving daily and consistent intervention. So again, in years past, these Tier Two students, they were required to receive this intervention, but it was primarily done by the classroom teacher. And, you know, when they have a lot of other needs within their classroom, that can be quite challenging. So I know the teachers have mentioned that because they have me to focus on some of those struggling learners, it's freed them up to work on some of their Tier Two instruct, or Tier One instruction. Lauren Burrows mentioned that she's noticing the students that I work with are more engaged and confident. A lot of times, students that struggle in reading, they're reluctant to read in class, participate in class. So I think having them in a small group where it's less intimidating and the materials are on their reading level, that really helps build that confidence. And I think it's great that Lauren is seeing that transfer into her classroom. And then Alyssa Lempner, she mentions that I am help, helping to build that solid foundation with her kindergarten students. I think kindergarten, more than a lot of other grades, they come to us with such a variety of needs. So having, again, an additional person that I've been able to work with some of those students who didn't have those early literacy skills and, you know, reinforce that with them in the small group, it's really been beneficial. And as Alyssa mentions, both of the students that I've worked with in her class have shown growth since the beginning of the school year. And then I will turn it over to Carson.
So my name is Carson Moore. I am currently the RTI Intervention Specialist at the middle school. And I have taken on a variety of different roles and responsibilities this year, the first being our check-in-checkout program. So I know Michelle had mentioned it as a system that we're really trying to strengthen this year. It was a program that was piloted at the middle school last year, but now that there is a staff member who is able to kind of build fidelity within the program and remain consistent with it, we've seen a lot more success with it this year. So check-in-checkout is a highly researched Tier Two intervention that pairs students with a staff member that serves as their mentor. And so these students create a very positive relationship with this staff member, and with the help of their mentor, they set goals for themselves that align with the reason that they're in the program. The reasons that they're in the program come from those specific MTSS pillars or those at-risk criteria areas. So academics, behavior, social-emotional needs, or attendance needs. Again, those goals are set based on the reason that they're in the program. And then each and every day, those students strive to meet their goals by receiving meaningful feedback from not only their mentor every day, but also each teacher. They have a progress-tracking sheet, and the teacher collects data, and the student receives feedback. My role within the program is to, I've set up the whole program, I train the mentors, I currently, I'm tracking all the data and all the program paperwork, and then I'm able to analyze the data to see when student schools should be modified, be there as a support for all the teachers and all the mentors as they need, as they're going through the program with their, those students. Another area that I'm working in right now is behavior check-ins with students specifically that are on an IEP with a behavior goal. So I have been assigned to some specific students that I meet with in the morning, midday, in the afternoon, on a daily basis to reinforce positive behavior expectations. A lot of those expectations, again, are tracked data-wise, and so I'm able to look at whatever that method may be, their chart, and talk about how the day went, start the day off right, and make sure that they understand those positive behavior expectations, as these students are students who need that constant reminders and reinforcement. Another area that I've been working at in the middle school, again, as Melissa mentioned, at the elementary level, I'm working at the middle school to be the case manager for the students with disabilities that are currently in the SOLO program. So again, just like Melissa's role, I've been providing the specially-designed instruction that's outlined in their IEPs. And again, with, same with Melissa, some students are receiving this instruction virtually on a Google Meet, or some, again, are coming into the building and meeting with me to receive their instruction. Along with that, I've been writing their IEPs, their progress reports, their transition-progress reports, to make sure that these students have a case manager and have the services that they need based on their IEP, even though they're in an online learning platform. So the impact of my role, some staff members and also a parent has commented on what I've been doing. So first, John Lipowski is a sixth-grade science teacher, and he noted that my work has been helping to narrow that achievement gap. So again, I'm sure we've all seen a lot of gaps in learning, especially due to the pandemic, whether it be academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally. And my work within the check-in-checkout program, the behavior check-ins, everything that I've been doing has been helping to, to narrow that gap. Another, a parent of a check-in-checkout student has noted that she believes that the program is a wonderful program and a wonderful way to keep her student accountable. And, you know, you can see the data flat out. It's not, you know, did you do this, did you not? It's, it's very black and white. And being able to have that meaningful feedback in setting goals and get this positive relationship with a teacher at the school can really benefit her student. And then Courtney Davian, an intervention specialist at the middle school, has noted that I've been developing very supportive relationships with specifically her students on her caseload, and those relationships have in turn helped that student academically and behaviorally be able to succeed. Some other roles that I am currently responsible for at the middle school, the first being PBIS data analysis. So I know we've talked a lot about PBIS, and specifically at the middle school, we have a multitude of ways that we recognize positive behavior. And so that could be through our Pride QR code system, our Student of the Week, Shout Out of the Month, things like that. And I am responsible for analyzing all that data, creating graphs, creating charts, so that we can see trends when we meet in those PBIS meetings, and see where our recognition is going well, where we should improve to drive future practices. We are also currently looking at, again, I know Michelle mentioned, we're really trying to make sure that our positive recognition of students outweighs our negative discipline referrals. And our little magic number for that has always been four to one, meaning that for every four posi, or yes, for every one negative discipline referral, we need to see four positive recognitions of students. And I'm happy to report that in our last data meeting, we realized that our ratio is currently at a twenty-eight to one ratio, meaning that for every one negative discipline referral, we have twenty-eight positive recognitions of students. Another part of my role at the middle school is providing math intervention during the intervention and enrichment period. Again, these are for Tier Two students who require more small-group targeted interventions. Currently, I work with every seventh and eighth-grade team and pull specific students and use data to drive those grouping and intervention practices, depending on what they need each week. And then I am also currently co-teaching in a sixth-grade math classroom. The program that I'm currently teaching in is a special education pilot program that integrates students with moderate to intensive needs into the general education classroom. Again, my role in this, being the co-teacher, allows for collaboration with these students' primary case manager to ensure that they have an intervention specialist in every class. Because these students do have moderate to intensive needs, they are more used to a model where they are only together in their own classroom and a self-contained unit. And now that they are being integrated into a general education model, they do need the support of an intervention specialist in every class. Okay, so the impact of this work. Anne Forkappa has noted, she's a seventh-grade math teacher, that in the past, she has had conversations with her department administrators, other stakeholders, that we need this intervention, and we need someone to be able to pool small groups and serve these students. And she said that, in my work, we've turned these, if only conversations of the past into realities of the present. And so now students are being served, and their needs are being met. Julie Cuback, an eighth-grade math teacher, noted that, as her students have been working with me during IE, they feel much more confident going into their assessments, being able to work with me and having that intervention right before an assessment, and make sure that they know the material going into it has helped them become successful in those math units and having those targeted interventions. And then Katie Gleck, a sixth-grade math teacher, she's my co-teacher in the, in the special education pilot program that I'm working in. And she has noted that, due to my role of being there to support those students, I've helped students, struggling students grow, not only academically, but also emotionally. Again, these students are students with moderate to intensive needs, who are not used to the general education setting. And so you can imagine the extensiveness of needs that they might possess. And so my work there has helped them grow academically and emotionally.
So at each of our buildings, there is a...
Carson?
Yes, yes.
So the pilot program, are we going to evaluate at the end of the school year?
Yes, we've, we've been having meetings throughout the year to talk about how things are going, what things are working, what things aren't working. And it's been something that we've been constantly changing and evolving throughout the school year, so there's already been changes made. Actually, at the beginning of the school year, I was not co-teaching in that classroom, and it was just the general education teacher and a special education aide. And they quickly realized that these students do need an intervention specialist in every class. And so that's when I was brought in for the math portion of that. So again, this program has been something that's been an evolution and will continue evolving as we see what's working and what has not been working.
So it's a pilot program, or we're going to continue to evolve it, or it's a pilot program, and we're going to make a decision on whether to continue it?
It's a, another extension of how we're continuously trying to find ways to serve kids in a least restricted environment and in a gened population. So it's just one more way with Carson on board, where we said, okay, we have an additional resource we didn't have before. Because when you have students who monitor more intensive needs, and they're in a gened setting, they're going to need more support typically. And that's going to oftentimes look like, you know, highly-trained folks that, like, like Carson. And so it really depends on, you know, what we can do, what capacity do we have at a staff level going into next school year, and also, do we see the academic gains from those students this year in that setting?
Can I just ask a quick question? That check-in-checkout program?
Sure.
Which, by the way, I think is amazing. Is it mostly kids on IEPs or 504 plans?
So, so no.
How do you decide who does this? Because it'd be great for everybody, I think.
Right, yeah, I know. I agree with that. I feel like if every student could have this, we'd, we'd see a huge improvement. So no, currently, we have Tier Two students only in this program. So we would usually designate students who are on IEPs or 504s, usually in Tier Three, not always, but usually. And so with this, we made a decision within myself, the administrators, the counselors, the school psychologists, to serve these students who, I don't want to say are forgotten about, but are need, need more of an intervention in a different way. And so students that are on IEPs and 504s, they're already assigned to case manager, they have those supports in place, they might be getting something similar to this based on their IEP goals. But these Tier Two students were not receiving something like this. And so we, again, looked at all the data from academics, from behavior, using Michelle's at-risk list and the criteria that had been outlined already by, from her, to see which students would benefit most from the program. Most of these students fell in that at-risk criteria within three out of the four pillars.
So with each of the buildings, there is an RTI Intervention Specialist. You've heard from two of them. And Melissa is at two elementary buildings, but we also have others at the other elementary buildings. And I just wanted to go back to talk about what, how they, their role is being served at the high school. So as I mentioned, and similar to what Carson had just said, for students that meet three out of the four criteria, they receive a success plan. So Jennifer Westalowski is really targeting intervention on those students that require a success plan. A lot of these students, by the time we're looking at high school, they might not have met with academic success for quite a while. So part of what she's doing is really building connections with them, similar to the mentoring system at the middle school that we have there. So she works with individual students or even small groups of students. A big part of her role is communicating with the teachers, since she has to, and she's starting to know a lot about a lot of different curriculums, because she has to really touch base with them to know what to help the students with. So she, not only is she building connections with the students, she's providing them with organizational support. In fact, she just stopped by today to tell me that nearly every student struggles with executive functioning, which would be their ability to plan and organize, manage time. So she's already seeing that as a major need for all of the students that she's working with. So with that, she kind of does what they don't necessarily have the natural abilities to do right now, in teaching them to set goals, to plan, to break down the tasks if they have projects. She's also reteaching some of the skills to help them to master the skills. And I've also noticed how she's really encouraging a lot of self-advocacy, which is what we want to see with all of our students. And then she's also providing the support for our SOLO programs as, as our Melissa and Carson down there. And then I really liked these two statements that were provided. On the right side, Andrew Cosmicus, he provide, he overs, he's a supervisor for Jen, and he's also noted how she has documenting her work with the students. She, she loves to share the successes that she's finding. And she's also, again, very intuitive in terms of noticing some different indicators, again, that she sees, like, when we're comparing departments. You know, she might see, like, oh, the, these, this particular department, Social Studies, has a really good organizational system for the students, but I don't see that same, you know, type of system. And so she points out those kinds of things, too, it's kind of like an insider there. And then Tracy Harrison is an intervention specialist who works with students on IEPs, and she works with them at a targeted standards class. And she was noticing that it was, it's difficult sometimes to know, do I work on the students' goals related to their IEP, or do I work on helping them to keep up with their classwork? So she has found it very helpful to have Jen assisting her and them working together, so that the students can pass the classes and master skills.
And so by receiving, or sorry, by providing the necessary support to students who are in need of these Tier Two interventions, we are hoping to see improvement in not only areas involving academic success, but also social, social-emotional learning and student behavior. And again, our role as intervention specialists who work a lot with students that fall within Tier Two, our role allows teachers who work with students within Tier One and Tier Three to keep the focus on them, but also know that the students who fall within Tier Two are receiving the necessary supports and interventions that they need to be successful.
Good evening. My name is Anne McDevitt, and I am in the role of the Special Education Coach this year. And so I am coaching in the area of specially-designed instruction. And so when we're talking about specially-designed instruction, we're talking about those supports and specific strategies that our students are receiving in order to be successful in the curriculum. And we're talking about those students who are on IEPs or are in the process of being identified for special education services. So I work with the entire district. So at the elementary level, I'll start there. I've been working on collaborating with our teachers and staff and identifying research-based assessments and interventions. Collaborating with our teachers and staff and teaming is so crucial in order to meet the needs of the, the whole student. So a good example of this is, a student recently was participating in the general education curriculum with accommodations and modifications to her work. And every time writing came around, she was having a lot of difficulty. She started hiding underneath her desk. And we decided to pull the team together to identify why her accommodations and modifications were working in some of her subject areas, but not in the area of writing. And so when we pulled the team together, we discovered that writing was really hard for her. And we made some additional modifications to her work based on the recommendations of the occupational therapist, and she started to have more success in writing. So now that student is more successful with all of her modifications and accommodations that she's receiving. And then when we're talking about research-based assessments and interventions, we're working, I'm working with the teachers to identify how they're connecting their instructional strategies to the common core assessments and our learning progressions that go along with those. We're improving our instructional practices, too, to make sure that we're having more rigorous formative assessments in order to drive our instruction and make sure that we're kind of doing that temperature check of, do our students have the learning, or do we need to back up? do we need to back up and reteach a concept? So also at the elementary level, as I said, we're working on focusing on our instructional practices, I'm working with our staff on training and coaching and problem solving. So we're implementing our curriculum that meets the needs of our students, of our diverse lean, sorry, learners, and we're working on building student skills through consistent instructional practices with progress monitoring and adjustments as needed. I've worked a lot with our newer staff members this year, our new intervention specialists, making sure that they have the correct training and procedures for our special education and understanding best practices as they relate to our special education services. And we're problem-solving some of the problems, some of the issues that are occurring in the gen-ed classrooms for our students. So an example of how we're problem-solving is we had a student who was not able to participate in the daily morning meeting that was occurring at, in his third-grade classroom, and we built on the student's strengths. So in meeting with the teacher, she identified that the student was very good at following a visual schedule, he was motivated by following his visual schedule and receiving a positive reinforcement when he completed his activities. So we set up a schedule for him to follow every day with a preferred reinforcement, and now he's successful in participating in that social skills activity, and he's interacting with his peers independently, which is huge for this child. So I also gathered some feedback from some of the staff members that I'm working with. Dr. Sally Razzo has noted that I am working with our TBTs to make sure that they are focused and intentional in their work, and they are using their data to drive their instructional practices. Michaela Buckley is one of our first-year intervention specialists, and she feels that being able to share experiences and discuss, you know, the pitfalls and the successes has been really impactful in her ability to achieve success with her students. And then Megan Serso, who's one of our special education coordinators, her and I had a discussion earlier in the year, and she asked me to check in with a teacher who felt that she was having scheduling difficulties and required more staff members to support her students. So in working directly with this teacher, we discovered that it really wasn't a scheduling issue, she just needed to tweak her classroom structure that she had in place, and we were able to make her classroom structure work with the existing staff members and provide adequate support to all of her students. So at the secondary level, I'll kind of combine my work with middle school and high school as a lot of it has been focused on aligning our content and our standards and our instruction and our assessments between the two. So I've been working a lot with our intervention specialists in our moderate to intensive classrooms to create a functional curriculum for those students. And so what I mean by functional curriculum is we're taking a look at where we want our students to be when they exit high school, and so what are the skills that they absolutely must have in order to be successful when they leave us? And so we're kind of working backwards from there and scaffolding where to, what are our entry points and what are our exit points for those students? And through that, we're identifying the resources that we have and our best practices and incorporating those at different levels. We're also improving our practices, specifically at the high school, I've been working with a team of general education teachers and special education teachers to look at our classes that have peer mentors, and so we have a few classes, we have an art class, we have a business management class, we have a food, food and, I can't think what you're calling that. We have a foods class, and so all of those courses have-
Can I go?
I'm sorry.
Can I go to that class?
Yes. All of these classes have peer mentors that are either chosen or sign up, and so we've realized over the years that sometimes our peer mentors sign up and they don't realize what they're signing up for, or they just might need a little bit more ability to ask questions or receive some instruction on how to best work with our students who have disabilities. So by working with our special education teachers and our general education teachers, we're coming to an understanding of what both of those populations need and how it can best benefit both of them. We're collaborating with our TBTs to identify areas of need and developing our research-based and data-driven interventions. So again, at the secondary level, really looking at those transitions from middle to high school and making sure that we're collaborating amongst our teams to make sure that we have targeted instruction and we're aligning our instruction. We want to make sure that we are identifying our areas where more information is needed on our students, so kind of the work that Michelle is doing, where we're identifying where we have our greatest need for intervention and what supports we need to put in place for those students as they start to transition. Also, similar to the elementary school, I've worked a lot with our newer staff, training and coaching them on procedural processes, as well as being able to meet the needs of our unique learners. And with curriculum development, we've been reviewing at the secondary level what curriculum we have available, what supplemental materials we have available, and making sure that those are all aligning back to the standards, and then identifying if we feel that we need something more, why we need it, and what purpose is it going to serve our students. We're also planning our curriculum for the unique learning styles of all of our students because we are there to meet their individual needs and goals. At the secondary level, here's some feedback that I received. Courtney at the middle school has reached out multiple times to ask questions about students. A specific student that she's reached out to me about was having difficulty following his daily check-in, not the same as what Carson is doing, it was set up through his IEP goal, and we decided that he had outgrown that, that check-in system, and maybe he needed to move to more of a goal-setting that gave him a little bit more autonomy and a little bit more control over his decisions. And then Eric Castle at the, who's one of our assistant principals at the high school, has noted that I'm making a positive impact in our RTI process and ensuring that all students are getting the proper amount of support. And then Drew Kosmikas, our special education coordinator, I work with him in multiple buildings, but specifically at the high school, he's noted that I'm helping to build structure in our meetings and structure in our instructional practices. So a really cool thing about my position is I've been able to work a little bit more closely with our special education aides this year, so I've worked on some training and development. We had a really meaningful professional development day in October, and we were able to have a great discussion and do some problem-solving for those real problems that they have in the classroom. And so that kind of led to some opportunities for feedback. So for some of those staff, I was able to take their questions, provide them feedback, and for some of them, I was actually able to go into the classroom, shadow them, and be able to provide that feedback in real time. And so some of those things that I provided feedback on were token reinforcement systems, accommodations, positive reinforcement at our levels of prompting for students. So I asked those staff members to reflect on that collaboration that we had that day, and these are some of the takeaways that they had. So we had some thoughts about essential communication, that communication is essential to our jobs. If we're not communicating with each other and collaborating, we're not going as far as we possibly can. The idea of planning for the future, sometimes it's very hard for our elementary teachers and staff to think about our students as they're going to be exiting high school in the future. So being able to talk with those staff members that serve our population in the secondary level was really eye-opening to them to realize where these students need to be when they leave us. Another thought was about independence, again, kind of tying into where we want our students to be when they, when they leave. We need to make sure that we're consistently thinking about whether the things we're teaching and the skills that we're providing are fostering independence. Understanding behavior, so making sure that we are constantly reminding ourselves that behavior is a form of communication, and so when our students are acting out or acting in, that they're trying to tell us something. And then finally, meeting the needs of the individual, so making sure that we are not forming, for lack of a better word, a cookie-cutter program for our students, but making sure that we're treating them as an individual student. So through coaching, what we would continue to see is students making progress in target skill areas such as academics, social-emotional, life skills, and adaptive skills. Our classroom aides are supporting students with the intent of having them be a more independent student, and then our intervention specialists are collaborating with our general education teachers to have the most positive outcomes for our students while meeting them in their most least restrictive environment.
That concludes our abbreviated version of our presentation. When you're very passionate about the work you do, it's hard to keep it short, but we appreciate your time. Any questions for us?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank each and every one of you. The fact that you've taken the time out of your evening to join us for a little over an hour says a lot. And just two quick comments while I was listening and thinking about it. One of the things that I think is really neat is I think many of us can remember what it was like when we were children, and if we were, you know, reading anecdotally, you know, you had your class in second grade and you got divided and you, pretty soon, you figured out who the lions are and who the bears were and who the tigers were, and you had your, your separate reading time or whatever, but students would fall through the cracks with that system. It wasn't that it was a bad system, but eventually you, you know, maybe a tiger should have been a lion or vice versa. The tools that we have now and the people behind the tools, because the tools are nice, but if you don't have the right people behind the tools, gives us an ability to be a lot more focused, and I think it gives us hope that you're not going to have those kids falling through the cracks. I think it's neat that you can, we can take some tests, our students can take some tests, and we can figure out, these five students need more work on phonics, phonemic awareness, et cetera. So I think that's exciting, and I think that's neat, but I think lots of things are neat. But the other thing I wanted to share is, you know, we're all listening to the radio and TV and so on, and school right now is a lot of hard work, and you, you don't have to go far to hear stories about how teachers are overwhelmed and our students are overwhelmed, et cetera. You're all doing a lot of work, but what's heartening for me, and I think, I hope I speak for the rest of the board, you're all passionate about it, and you're all happy about it, and you're excited about it, and that's a good thing for our, for our parents and our students and our community. So I wanted to say that out loud, and thank you for that.
Mr. McCo, if I could just say one thing. First of all, I want to thank the board for your trust in our team. You know, a year ago or so, we came to you and said, hey, we have these ideas for these positions that not a lot of places are doing, but here's the concept we think it could be meaningful, and you gave us the trust and faith in what we do to give us the green light to create these positions, and I want to thank these ladies that are here because you took an idea and a concept and you brought it to life. And, you know, not often at these board meetings do we really get to open up the curtain and talk about specifically what we're doing to have a positive impact on the life of a child, whether it's creating systems, whether it's working directly with staff, or whether it's working directly with students. So, you know, I know it was a lengthy presentation, but I enjoyed every minute of it and the work that you're doing and the gains we're seeing, and it's exciting to see the different spots we're in. You know, it's exciting to see, Michelle, where you've been able to get the high school and middle school and what that's setting the future for moving forward, and we can go through the line in all of those positions, but just thank you for the support and the trust and the go-ahead for that, and thank you for the work that you're doing to make this a reality for our kids, so as Richard said, that fewer and fewer fall between the cracks as we move forward, so thank you.
And I'm only smiling because, yes, we, we trust you, but we're going to measure it.
We know, Richard. Any other questions for the group? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Phenomenal.
And you may not have homework, but I'm sure you want to get home to your families, so please feel free to exit.
Thank you.
What we would like to do next is turn it over to Jenny to share and give an update on the plan for summer learning 2022. So in front of you, you have a table that she's put together, I'm gonna move my, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
I will scroll as you talk.
Thank you. And I'll have Erin come up to the table because she's gonna, yeah, please, I may have a question or two. I know, I need, I need a team. So you ready for presentation number three here with me? Okay. So just a little history on summer learning. I know, as you heard from these phenomenal educators and the work that they're doing, they're working incredibly hard to, you know, fight any, any kind of learning loss that we have through the pandemic and bring our kids up to speed as to where they should be and beyond, and we're really hoping, and you're going to see, I'm going to talk some numbers here, for potential summer learning identification, and we're really hoping we can get those down through the great work that they're doing. So, but we'll see. So just a little history for our newer board members. Prior to last year, our summer school, I'll call it summer school, really just consisted of helping students primarily maybe in first grade or second and third grade over the years, I think we narrowed it down to even that, where we would invite students, I'm talking elementary level, we would invite them to come in if they were lower in their reading primarily, and we would focus only on that. And so, you know, over the years, we've had anything from maybe 30 students that we would invite maybe 200 or upwards of that, but we would have maybe 30 to 60 students attend that each summer and make some gains and try to get them to pass, you know, the third-grade reading guarantee, and that was always free to those students to come in. And then for the secondary level, we would offer credit advancement, so primarily PE and health, we started with econ and financial literacy a few years back, didn't get as many kids in that, but PE and health were popular so they could get those courses kind of out of the way in the summer and then be able to take other electives during the year. And then we offered credit recovery, so that was, you know, the idea there is really toward our juniors and seniors to try to get them the credits that they need so they can graduate on time with their, with their peers. And for middle school, we would offer summer school, there would be a charge for that, there's a charge for credit recovery, there's a charge for credit advancement, and, you know, summer school at the middle school, because they don't really get credit for it, we wouldn't see a huge amount of attendance, but the idea was to get them ready for high school. We want to prepare you for the learning that you, you may need. And then we always offered band and orchestra camp, so that was our traditional summer, summer school. Last year, we implemented, as you can see on the chart, I did a comparison between summer 2021 and what we're proposing for 2022, and last year, we really ramped it up due to the pandemic. You know, we really wanted to try to catch students that we felt had learning loss or learning gaps because of the interruptions of instruction and offer even more than that to try to get, again, they talked a lot about social-emotional skills and build those skills as well. So you'll see as I go through from what we did last year to what we're proposing this year, trying to kind of keep it a little similar, but with some changes based on what we learned from, from last summer. So I'll start with elementary, if that's okay. Last year, we offered four weeks. Based on the feedback from those, and again, I appreciate the team that helped put all of this data and information together, we had Amy Penny at the elementary, Sean Collins at the secondary helping, and so a lot of theirs is, the feedback you'll see here is their anecdotal, as they firsthandly experienced it last year, along with, we did parent surveys, we talked to the teachers last year, so a lot of this feedback is from there. What we're proposing for elementary is that we go through three weeks this year. We felt by the fourth week, students' attendance dropped off a bit, and although it's less, I think we've cut out that half an hour between ELA and math where it was like a break time and kind of kind of build in the breaks like within the learning and have it be more engaging. So we're really not losing hours per se, we'll still have 15 hours of ELA, 15 hours of math that you'll see there, but kind of cutting out the breaks and embedding the social-emotional learning right in the middle, or the morning of the day, which they're used to that because they have their morning meetings typically at the elementary level. We also noticed that students would miss a week due to vacations, or they participated in Makerspace camp, so they were really getting the three weeks essentially, and I'll talk about how to implement Makerspace for those that may be involved in this. So that, again, is our proposal for the timeframe that we're looking at for elementary. In terms of the academics, last year, we focused on power standards, math, and ELA. We used a CAN program, I think, for ELA, and our math teachers developed their own, am I correct, Erin? And we left it open to any pre-K through five student, we had, we served approximately 376 students, and again, it was open to anybody, whether they had gaps or not, we offered it to everybody because we didn't, you know, specifically know where, where kids exactly were or what they needed in terms of, you know, based on the interruption- needed in terms of, you know, based on the interruptions to school. So this year, what we're proposing is to continue to serve K through five only. We could do a preschool program if we find that's necessary. But as you saw in the data that they presented, we still want to kind of continue to look at where they are. Young, the younger they are, there's there's just, it's very hard to differentiate based on such individualized needs for preschool. But we're not opposed to it. It's just we want to continue to look at that data. We would do invitation only this year for ELA and math for those students performing before below grade level. And we're measuring a variety of things right now. And we did the preliminary numbers and we're already upwards of 700 students at the elementary level that would be possible. But as you saw in their their progress that they're making, and we threw everything in there. We threw in the state data. We threw in where they are in their, if they're on a RIMP. We threw in if they, where their EAMS web scores were. And so, you know, that's a ton of kids. I'm not sure that they're all going to definitely need this program. So we'll continue to look at those numbers. But as you can see, you know, we want to make sure, we casted a wide net because we want to make sure we don't miss anybody. We're proposing that our teachers actually create the curriculum. We don't want to buy a CANN curriculum. We feel like, based on the work that Erin and her department have done this year with standards and assessments, we feel like we're in a really good spot. Our teachers really understand their standards to a depth. They really are grasping those power standards especially, and they can do a much better job designing assessments, designing formative assessments along with the common summative assessments that we're developing. And we can use those to measure the growth of students as they go through this this three-week period. And that'll give us a lot more data to measure our impact. So, again, Erin, do you want to mention anything about academics that I missed?
Will we be able to reuse the curriculum?
Pardon me?
If we if we develop it this year, we can continue to use it year after year.
And we will do that with the math that we developed last year.
Okay, so for social emotional learning, last year, we had our counselors come in. I think one counselor came in per week, provided some lessons to students. Feedback was it was it was a little bit disruptive because they would come in and do a lesson and they were kind of into the reading or the math. Where we're going as a district, not that our counselors won't provide lessons, big lessons for students, but really if our teachers can kind of embed that within the lesson that they're doing, you know, have a collaborative group, have them communicate together and teach some of those skills as they're doing the content, we feel that that will be less disruptive. And we would still offer, parents could request counseling if needed. So by toward the end, that's what the counselors were doing. They were, they had so many students within the program that wanted some individual counseling or group counseling that they started to provide. So we'll still offer that if that's needed and we can, we can have parents sign up for that. With Makerspace, so Makerspace was a huge hit last year. We had lots and lots of students participate. But right now, we're looking at limiting it possibly to grades two through five. With pre K and one, it was it was challenging. And maybe it was challenging because they weren't as exposed to Makerspace this year or last year. Rather, this year, you know, through the work of Jessica Frenchik and Dave's whole department putting these things together, there are Makerspace carts at the elementary that kids are starting to use. So that's, it's pretty cool. So we'll have to see how this goes. But really, two through five can really be a little bit more independent. They can use the materials and really get something out of it. We want to be a little bit more proactive than we were last year and create specific projects that connect with the content and the grade levels for them. We do want to reiterate that the PM session, we would, we would say that if you're an AM student going to that ELA and math, then you would select a PM Makerspace selection for that week. So you're not missing that content. It's really difficult if we don't, you know, max out 15 students per session. If we get a lot that want it, we can look at additional staffing, but no, that would be additional staffing and additional things that we would, we would need to consider. And we're also looking at maybe charging a nominal fee for this program, just because, again, with ESSR, last year, we had the ESSR funds. This year, I'm not so sure where we stand on all of that. We would have to fund it. So I'm looking at charging a fee for for the Makerspace camp. Continuing for gifted, last year, we offered, we held a separate class for gifted. We served over 36 students. We were considering designing a PBL project for gifted using our Makerspace. But Lauren, our gifted coordinator, came up with a great idea. Through her connections with NASA, she got a free camp that has a designed curriculum already in it involved. And she, you can see there, she she outlined everything that it involves, a ton of great, great work that we are focused on here and as the district, college career readiness. You know, social emotional learning is in there, connecting to STEM. So there's a whole bunch of components to that. And what she's proposing is that she would do a half-day third through fifth grade and a half-day six to eight. So focusing on the students that we serve, gifted three to five, and then offering something for the middle school, which we didn't necessarily do last year. And then again, so it'd be a two-week program, a half-day for each level. And she also, I think, is a great idea, offering an invitation for some of our high school students if they need hours, that they could come and help assist with the program. I think building those connections between some of those students, especially middle school to high school students, would be really beneficial.
You have to be in high school to be a
You could be a guest. You can come be a guest.
Did you go to space camp? I think I remember a story.
Think I'm in space camp. Or maybe some, some, some other people think I'm in space camp.
So I think we're going to move away from that PBL idea. And although it's still similar, it is a PBL project. But thanks to Lauren for seeking that out. Book club, we had about 15 students in book club last year. We're not thinking to offer it this year. Our media specialists and through the connections with the Strongsville Library, we feel like we can provide some recommendations for students that that would want to continue to participate in a summer reading. And you heard from George earlier with food services, if that program is extended through June 30, we can still offer, you know, food if needed. But the feedback was, you know, kids weren't really, you know, they were taking it and having it. But if it's offered, we'll certainly offer it. And then finally, with transportation, looking to transport all students if they take both ELA and math. It's a little more challenging if they just take math. So maybe their parents could drive them for math and then we could transport them home afterwards. So looking at that, in terms of transportation, we feel like if we transport them, it'll be a little bit easier to get them here. So I'm going to pause here for elementary. You know, any, I guess what we're looking for is this is what we're proposing. This is what we put together, based on all of the feedback and our discussions together. But if the board has any input, suggestions, feedback, we would be interested in that as we continue to plan for the summer learning program.
Do you want to hear that now?
Sure. Go ahead.
I just want clarification. Last year, it was determined, what grade level was the grade level you just finished? Is that still the case?
Yeah. So the idea would be to review the the power standards that they had within that grade level. So if I'm a third grader, right now, I'm going to be reviewing third grade power standards based on what maybe I missed or if I still have gaps in certain things.
Okay. With that, then, just one suggestion for the gifted. You had, the the previous iteration said something about Makerspace. And what I noticed was that Makerspace was two to five. The gifted programming is three to five. But you have our second grade students who are now identified district-wide, possibly including those second grade students. Depend, I expect numbers might be an issue.
Sure.
But that, and then is it both weeks? Like, it would be both weeks for everybody? So there would be no potential to do flip-flop, like six to eight is in the morning one week and six to eight is in the afternoon one week? That wouldn't necessarily work though because it's still, you'd miss one week of programming potentially. Yes?
I think we can explore that. I think we could look at, she just wants to divide the groups. She doesn't want them all together.
No, I get that.
You know, so if three through five came in the morning one week and then came in the afternoon the next week, I don't know that that would be an issue.
I don't see an issue with that. And the reason we didn't include second was just the age range, the gap. You know, it's not out of the question. It just makes for a wider range, as you know, second through fifth.
Did we have any, you know, anecdotal, as far as people signing up, but, you know, coming for one class, coming for two class, and then just stopping? Did we have a lot of that type of scenario?
If I remember correctly, our attendance rate, I want to say, was around 89%, you know, attending. And I think that they they pretty much attended on the days. I mean, maybe there was one or two that missed, but I think they were pretty much attending. It was that last week that they were seeing a noticeable drop off. So.
At the, at the elementary level, I'm generally supportive of building whatever we can that serves a need. I mean, the need is there. I don't think, I don't think we need to discuss the need. The question is, is, you know, we don't want to build something that nobody uses. But the idea that, you know, inviting, inviting students who we've identified as gaps, most parents will say, absolutely. And if we can adjust it to make sure that, you know, like the the change from four weeks to three weeks seems, seems reasonable, seems sensible. And as far as, as far as charging fees, you know, and nothing's in stone. But I think sometimes if you have a small fee, it it makes sure that, hey, I'm paying for this. I'm invested. I'm going to make sure versus, you know, just sign up and it's free. Well, you know, I'm gonna, I'm not going to prioritize. So I'm also generally supportive of a small fee. And again, things like busing, et cetera, my, my attitude is, is whatever we can, whatever we do and whatever we decide to do to maximize impact makes sense. So in my mind, if busing, if busing is going to help more students attend, let's look at busing. On the other hand, if if we're doing busing and all the parents are dropping their kids off anyways, then we don't need to provide a bus. But good job.
Was it free though last year?
Yes.
Yes.
And is it still the same funds we'd be using?
No.
I like George.
Well, we have ESSR three funds, which are, can be used over a three-year period. We have them, when we did the plan, we had them designated. So we would have to reevaluate the plan if if there's anything that wants to come off or we could replace it. We also had a set aside that we internally set aside if anything else came up. So we could use those. But with those ESSR three, in which this probably would meet the criteria, you have to document how it meets the, how it's related to the COVID-19 pandemic and how it addressed his learning loss. So you have to tie that connection to that as well with us.
We're also in the process of applying with the, with one of our community partners for a grant through the Ohio Department of Education that could provide funding. So we, it's still in that process. We, the application window just opened and we had to put our letter in tent and we did. So that's another, we have the ESSR funds that we could reallocate or rebudget. We may get a grant. So those are opportunities we're taking a look at. Or you could use the general fund if you would want to use the general fund.
And just one thing about the grant, we wouldn't find out if we got it until, like, I think, mid-April, April 6 or 7. So again, if we're going to commit to this, we can't rely on that. I'm just throwing that there.
I think this is an example of financial prudence where we have to figure out, are we going to reallocate ESSR funds? Are we going to commit with the general fund? And if we get the the grant, we commit less from the general fund, et cetera. But I think the general direction is continue planning and the expectation is to have a robust program.
So just quickly, I'll go through secondary. Secondary, we didn't make too many changes here. A couple of things that we wanted, so the the timeframe has to remain the same due to, I believe, the, first of all, for credit recovery, there's a lot of work that the students need to do. They have to complete, Erin, if I'm not mistaken, like, all the work, like, it's a semester course that they're, that they're doing.
Correct. It's an 18-week course condensed to four weeks.
Right. So that's a, you know, we can't shorten it anymore. And then with our credit advancement, you have to have a certain number of hours to qualify to get those credits. So we can't shorten the weeks here anymore. With credit recovery, we offered help sessions, but we didn't require attendance. And you can see there, we had a great success with our credit recovery, really targeting our juniors, you know, and or or seniors maybe that didn't graduate, but kids that aren't on track to graduate that, you know, should be a grade level above, like, those are the kids we need to get in because we want to get them back on track. We always charge for credit recovery. We haven't increased that price. But what they're suggesting is they must attend in person one time a week just to do a check-in, make sure, do you need anything? How's things going? Just to make sure they're keeping tabs on things. And those students that are taking two or more courses, like Erin just said, it's a semester course, and now I'm taking two in a, in a summer, we want them to attend every day. We want to make sure that they're on track so that, you know, they're make, they don't want to spend $100 and not pass that course. So right now, Mr. Collins at the high school has identified approximately 75 students, just based on semester one, where they fall right now with their grades that may qualify for this or that we would suggest, we can't, you know, force them to do this, but that we could get involved in this program. Communicating early is better just so that they know they're committed to it, if they're planning vacations. So that's why we want to kind of start this process. And then again, targeting, again, 10th grade students and obviously our juniors that aren't on track. But we want, if they want to go to Polaris, they've got to get the credits. So that's important. Credit advancement, continue to offer health, financial literacy, and economics online. That was pretty popular. Most students did that option last year. PE, though, we feel needs to be in person. It's really hard to do that online by yourself. So, you know,
I think it might be ideal.
Well, for some, for some, right? So again, having that, so PE in person does require one of our teachers to teach that. So that's an additional cost. But again, they need to do, we don't want to recommend that they take any more than two courses of this. It's really hard to complete more than that in in the four-week period. Continuing, so students at risk, this would not be a charge. This is looking at both middle school and high school. Again, this kind of replaces what we would say for middle school summer school to have our students in at middle school. We looked at a criteria last week with our, with our administration, looking at if you're, and what we did right now is look at, if you're failing in a core course, so math, science, social studies, ELA, you failed first and second semester. We're looking to target you to come to to this. We will continue to look at third quarter, but right now, we'd like to communicate with parents. Right now, your child is on track to attend summer learning. We want, you know, to get you caught up. And currently, Ms. Boydham did the, did the numbers and looking at 106 students right now to invite. So again, talking with, you know, as you just heard from Michelle, and trying to develop that system there to help those kids, and she talked about success plans. Parents are also involved in that planning of a success plan and what am I, what am I going to do? So we've been communicating already, hoping to get these kids back on track for the third and fourth quarter. So they don't have to attend, but that's our numbers right now. We would obviously target ELA and math first. And then, you know, if science and social studies is needed, we would have our teachers teach it, those that are familiar with the content and the standards and kind of go through it and be there with with our students. Same thing for ELA and math only, though. At the high school, we would target that, really targeting our ninth and 10th graders. We want to get them on track. And Sean did the, did the numbers there. We're looking at about 73 students based on semester one for for that. And again, the idea is to close those gaps with students and to try to get them, you know, caught up and ready for the following year. The last thing I just wanted to say was, we are going to look, and I didn't mention this for the elementary, but we do want to look at our EL students that may need that support. And Erin and I still need to talk a little bit more, you know, targeting a specific program for them is probably best. But if they also need help in the content areas, could we have an EL teacher come in and work with them as they're going through the content? So we may do some sort of version of that, but we, that is on the radar as well. As far as social emotional learning, again, one, our counselors, last year, our counselors and our social workers helped out. They had small groups. They met with students one-on-one. They, if they were part of our therapy program in school, the therapist continued that work with students throughout the summer. They want to also possibly do a group option. So if there are groups, students that are struggling with, you know, social phobias right now, or anxiety right now, or other issues, then would like to have a group option that they can have throughout the summer attend. And then Makerspace, we offered six through eight last year, looking at six through eight and high school. Our high school students want to, they've expressed a huge interest in this. You know, we've really built up our high school program this year with Mrs. Battle overseeing the high school Makerspace and also having a course in it. It's really piqued a lot of interest. They're doing some great things. So we do want to expand that for even our high school students. And again, charging that fee to attend. Again, book club, although we had some, we feel Again, book club, although we had some, we feel, again, we can just offer that through our media specialists. Food services, same thing, we'll offer what we need to offer and provide that. With transportation, we did not offer transportation last year. If you remember, we did most of it, was online for our students, but to get our students, if we're requiring them to come every day, we would start with middle school primarily, you know, I think they would have more of a challenge with transportation than our high school students. We're not opposed to high school, if we can pick them up as well, and they need something, we would help that out, but really looking at middle school transportation. So that is secondary. Any feedback, comments on secondary? All right, so the last thing I have are all the costs. So I went through what we spent last year, and just really broke it down into everything, and you can see the difference between last year and this year. One of, I'll just pick out a couple notable things. So the teachers for elementary, going down from four weeks to three weeks will lessen that, so that's why you see the lesser cost. However, the hourly rate goes up a little bit with each summer, we increase that rate, so there's that. EL teachers, we went from four to two, again, that could change based on the number of needs, and as we continue to plan, but that's what I'm estimating right now. The gifted teacher, if we have Lauren do it, I don't know, we can maybe take out that cost, because she's still within her contracted days. So again, this isn't set in stone, but I just wanted to give you somewhat of an idea of, as we continue to plan, what the potentials could be. So for elementary, you can see, we didn't include Makerspace just yet, because we're not quite sure how much we're going to spend on materials. And again, that $25, depending on how many attend, you know, that could offset some of those costs, so that's why I added plus Makerspace. But again, last year, we spent over $100,000, just in elementary alone, so it'll be a little less this year, so far as what we're projecting. And then in terms of secondary, secondary, because of having, you know, more teachers added in person, you see that cost actually go up. If we add the PE teacher, again, we're projecting the same amount of teachers, but it's going to depend. If we have 106 kids that need help, you know, we may have to add an additional support for that, because they'll be more in person. If they're coming every day, that may be an additional teacher or two. The one thing I did want to mention is the middle school math, I didn't put it in here, but last year, we did the Alex program, which was really helpful to those students, we're looking to continue that. So where you see that middle school math, that's that Alex program, that would be the same, you know, format.
Correct, specifically with a teacher to guide the students through the summer. So prior to last year, it was kind of, you know, you need to do this Alex program in order to be in the honors course. Last year, Danielle Blackman had a great idea of, I will meet with them virtually, I will set up office hours, I'll help them through concepts and topics, they may be stuck. I talked with her this week, and she wants to do that again, and even more, kind of set up some checkpoints, so that they don't get behind. She has a lot of great ideas. Kids felt it was super helpful to have that point of contact, rather than just try to navigate on their own at home.
And then one other thing to bring up, is an intervention specialist. We didn't have one last year, but I have a feeling we're going to need somebody this year, if they're coming in person, to kind of help with accommodations and things like that. I also included band and orchestra, really no change there, but I'm assuming our teachers are going to want to have those programs again. So you'll see, as you go through what the costs were for secondary, we did, I have some earnings there, because we did charge for the credit advancement, the credit recovery. I did include the costs of the programs that we spent. And the biggest one was the Apex program, you'll see. So as you look at the final totals, really, that's the difference that you see, more or less, that taking out, you know, that Apex program and designing our own curriculum and having our teachers teach it, again, will save us a little money. So I'm not quite sure we're going to really save in staffing levels and everything else, it would probably be about the same, but that Apex program was expensive, and, you know, we feel we can do a better job. Are there any questions? Any other things that you think we should consider, any other feedback you have for us as we continue?
Just, just making sure I understand the numbers.
Sure.
So you included band and orchestra.
Mm-hmm.
Is that in the 2020, 21 numbers and the projected numbers?
Yes. Yeah, I left it the same, I'm not sure if we have a percentage, because one is a stipend within the contract, and then one is the hourly rate, so...
Where is the substantial drop?
If you go to the last page, so if you look at, if you look at the cost, Richard, under secondary, where you see the Apex program?
There's the, there it is. Thank you.
So we will continue, you know, the goal of today is to get some parameters for how we can move forward, because it's a lot of planning and a lot of effort to get ready for the start of June. So based on the feedback and the discussion here, Jenny and Erin and their team will continue to move forward and work. If you have any thoughts or feedback, please reach out to us and let us know, and we'll keep you updated as we go through future meetings. I did want to loop back, it's not on the agenda, but we did talk last time, Mr. Miko, about a mental health survey. Jenny and I drafted a first review of it, based on the time. I didn't know if you wanted me to give a quick overview of it, or if you wanted to review that at a future meeting.
Can you overview it in five minutes or less?
I can do it in three.
Name that tune. Name that tune.
All right, don't start yet, are we ready? So the idea was, how can we, the thought behind it is, we want to create a survey to assess the mental health needs and the supports that are being utilized, and collect information that's going to help us drive action. So that's something where Jenny and I spent a lot of time thinking about, is what can we do that's new information or information that's going to help us get better as a school district? So you have the printout in front of you, but the survey would start out just by, it's an anonymous survey, would start out by saying, just what building, one per child, what building does this child that you're filling this out for attend, inclusive of our solo academy? Then we ask the simple question of, you know, does your child require mental health supports? We've given some contextual guidance to maybe what that means, and you select yes or no. If you select no, the survey's over. If you select yes, you'll go on to that next section, which is, the page is two and beyond. So if you say, yes, my child does require some mental health supports, the first thing we're going to ask is, do you think their mental health, do you think that the mental health needs of your child have increased due to the pandemic? We've given some choices there, yes, not sure, or no. Again, just trying to gauge a baseline understanding. And then we want to see, okay, if your child does have mental health needs, where are you accessing support for your child? So we went through and listed, all the way through Nancy Lowry, here's the things we offer as a school district. Are you utilizing any of those for your student's mental health needs? And then the last three are, the last two are something you do outside of school, or I have not sought anything out, as well as other, which they could add anything in that they would like to. So again, will give us for all, give us data as to, if we have, you know, X amount of students that have mental health needs, what percentage of them are accessing the resources we have at school? So that can drive some decision-making. After that, we've kind of, what we're trying to gauge is, are people utilizing the resources that we have? So that top question is just asking, or the question, the what suggestions question is asking, you know, based on our current resources and support in the district, how can we best utilize, what suggestions do you have to best utilize those? You know, do some parents even know we have this stuff in our school district? How to access it, things of that nature. If they feel, if a parent, the next question then just kind of gets to, hey, is there anything else besides what we offer that you think would be a benefit and be of value to offer as a school district? And the last question is kind of that catch-all of, is there anything else that you want to share with us? So that was kind of, we thought that we get this information, it could say, how well is our current resources being used? What are suggestions for how they can be used better? And what is stuff we don't even have right now that you think would be of value to your kids, that we could consider as a school district? So that was kind of the mindset for the survey.
And this is all confidential, right?
Yeah, there's no identifiable information collected.
Okay. Yeah, because I was going to say, they probably, some people will just hesitate the minute they see mental illness, they'll say no. So, just so, okay.
It's anonymous, and it's, and we would keep the data, however you want to say that, you know, we'll talk about it in aggregate, but we wouldn't talk about it in any specific.
Great, they have the option at the end to add their contact information if they want us to reach out to them, but that's optional, yeah.
Right, yeah.
We're at 2 minutes 45 seconds.
Good job.
I started the count late. I, I go forward. Does anyone, does anyone need to think about this, or can we?
I, I need to think about it.
Okay.
Not whether or not we do it, but I have a couple of thoughts on speaking language.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, so if you, if there's not any global concerns or feedback, then if you have any individual wordsmithing or tweaks or suggestions, just reach out to us individually, and we can make those, and we'll get going. And then, Mr. Miko, if we could skip over to the addendum, we do have one addendum for you under business services. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education accepts the proposal from Gardner for the HVAC project for Surar Elementary School, at a cost of $498,140. This is consortium pricing, and can be found in Exhibit A. If that's not what I said, that's what I meant to say.
That is what you meant to say. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Calvane, any discussion? This is consortium pricing, which means the bidding process is done by the state for us, so we're getting the best possible price. This, along with all our other projects, we're experiencing what everyone's experiencing, so we want to get ahead of it and get on Gardner's books, so that we can do this improvement project over the summer, correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion or questions, comments? George, take the role.
The only clarity I would bring up, not the state, but Ohio Schools Council, is the consortium that did the...
Thank you. Take the role.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Calvane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stoeck?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes. No, I'm good. My brain's just rolling on the mental health survey, so...
And the motion carries, and I'm sure Surar will enjoy the AC in the summer and the heating in the winter.
And that concludes my report.
Next on our agenda is Board of Education, other, do we have any others?
I'd just like to announce that the Strongsville Athletic Boosters are holding their annual Night of the Races, February 19th, at Mashad's Party Center. Doors are opening at 6:00 PM. There are still tickets available, they are $50 each, and you can get a table of eight for $360. To purchase tickets, or if you are interested in volunteering, please email the boosters at shsathleticboosters@gmail.com.
Are there any horses left?
I believe that all the horses have been purchased.
I was going to ask that, you can't purchase horses at the door.
No, no.
But you can't order anymore, either?
Let me find out.
I'm sure if someone really wants to buy an extra horse, we will, we will find a way to make another horse.
You start selling each other's horses. Hausum Wiles might be available.
We will not encourage a black market of horses. Any other others? Hearing none, we do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee, and to consider the investigation of complaints against a public employee or student.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum. I didn't hear it.
Haley.
Second by Ms. Stoeck, any discussion? Please take the role.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stoeck?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Ms. Calvane?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, the motion carries, we will go into executive session at 10:05. We have no expectation for further business. Thank you for your attention and your attendance, and have a nice weekend.